Yes, you ready? All right. Well, I'll call this work session to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, August ninth at four thirty P. M. Our first item of business will be roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Byrne. Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here. Our next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Borton.
Are no changes to the agenda as published?
Motion second to adopt the agenda with no changes. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item is consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
Move for the approval of the consent agenda as published for the president to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion on any of these items? Not? All those in favor, signify of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the consent agenda is adopted. We didn't have any items moved from the consent agenda, so let's move into department commission reports. First up is Finance Department and we have a item before us, I think council, you received a memo on this from Finance about approving the revised fiscal year twenty twenty-two amended revenues and expenditures. So it's just one of those items that I'll, I'll read and actually I'll make it as part of a motion. And then we can vote on that and have the correct revenues reflected for this, for this item. Amended revenues and expenditure, so. I move that council approve the revised amended revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. That amount is one hundred ninety-four million nine hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the revised amended revenues and expenditures. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the revised amount, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any opposed? Hearing none? That is adopted. Next up, item twenty-five, Fire Department. Chief Bloom. Memorandum of Understanding. We like understanding.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. I guess I have items twenty-five and twenty-six on there and this is just for an awareness for council that we opened the contract or actually the union opened the contract to correctly reflect some verbiage that's captured in Article one point three that should the budget be approved. As it's written, there will be a captain of logistics that's represented in the C. L. A. And so the terminology was updated to reflect that position in the C. L. A. correctly. That's all that M. O. U. is about. And then the second M. O. U., if there's any questions about that.
Yeah, let's, any questions?
I'm sorry.
On item twenty-five? Okay. Chief, go ahead.
Okay, and then the item twenty-six, the second M. O. U., again with the union, working with administration. Obviously, the organization is growing exponentially, forty percent over the next year. We have figured out that there is going to be a, we would not have enough fire apparatus operators or engineers to meet the demand that's going to be up and coming. And so working with the union administration and the union came to the agreement to allow for a wavering of a one-time waiver of a time in grade to allow people who would not traditionally be eligible to promote, should they be successful through the engineer development program and a testing process. We wait, they intend to allow a waiver of that time in grade. So that's what that M. O. U. reflects. And so that way, we will be able to internally hire Meridian firefighters to drive and operate the apparatus versus hiring from outside the organization.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Nary.
Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanted to make share because we haven't had one of these for a few years. We have done this before. We have had situations, just like the chief has said, where we've grown and there's not enough big people with the time to do the backfills to get these positions promoted. But they can pass the test, they can pass the programs. They meet all the requirements but for that one condition. So we've done this periodically over the years for the exact same reasons.
Good, thank you, Mr. Nary. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Warren.
Mr. President, we do need a motion to approve both the M. O. U.
Okay, let's go back then. Item number twenty-five. The M. O. U. to establish permanent position of captain of logistics.
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
As item twenty-five, I move that we approve the M. O. U. Between the local and the city of Meridian, establishing a permanent position of captain of logistics as stated therein.
Second.
Motion a second on this item twenty-five is our discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Nary, is this a voice vote on from M. O. U. or roll call? Okay, Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Byrne. Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Item number twenty-six. Councilman Borton.
Mr. President. I move that we approve the M. O. U. between our local and the city of Meridian to waive the time and grade requirement for the engineer position as set forth in that M. O. U.
We have a motion a second for item twenty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Byrne. Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. And the M. O. U. is adopted. All right, now, Warren, ordinance change discussion. Water recycling system requirements for new commercial car washes.
Yeah, so I also have two items. This is the first one, Council President, members of the council. The Public Works Department would like to get your input on a proposed change to the ordinance that would require recycling systems for new car washes that go in in the city of Meridian. As you are well aware from this past year, water is a big deal and and conserving water is something that we want to make sure that we are cognizant of and that we are working to do our part. Car washes actually are one of the most major water users that we have have here in the city of Meridian. In fact, I think one of the car washes is the largest water user in the city of Meridian. So they use a significant amount of water. They discharge that water to our wastewater treatment plant. That also eats up quite a substantial amount of capacity in the wastewater treatment plant, which if we could, you know, slow that down, would allow us to slow down the rate that we have to expand the treatment plant to accommodate new growth. So we think it makes sense for us to require these. Most of the new car washes that have gone in in the last few years, in fact, I'm not aware of any that haven't, have actually installed car wash recycling systems because they actually save them money on the assessment and their monthly bills. And it's offsetting enough that they, they do it. Just so you know, we did reach out to like Fast Steadies and a couple of other of the car washes that, bigger car washes that operate in the valley or here in the city of Meridian. And although most of them put them in because it saves them money, we asked them if they'd be willing to support necessarily this change. And most of them, as you could expect, kind of said, well, we're not exactly giddy about adding regulations to ourselves, but we're going to do it as long as it saves us money. So we're here tonight, we think it would be wise for us going forward to just have that as a condition of new car washes as they go in, that they do install the recycling systems. Because we do believe that it's in the best interest of the citizens and certainly the Public Works Department from a water consumption as well as treatment perspective. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Warren, council, questions, comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman Byrne.
I just want to take up a bunch of time, so I have a lot of questions for you right now. First one is, what about like existing car washes? Are they going to have to change?
The way it's written, we are not asking existing car washes to change. Only, this would only apply to new car washes that come in.
Mr. President.
It's Councilwoman Strater.
Unless Councilman has more questions, okay. What if a car wash changes ownership? Would that be a requirement for the new owner? Or would that still be grandfathered under the existing car washes?
The way it's contemplated is it would be a condition of approval for the car wash. So I think it would transfer, maybe that's a better question for Bill, but I think it would transfer to the new owner.
So I guess in looking at the ordinance, it seems clear to me, Mr. President, members of the council, I mean, I guess I think it's still an existing business. I don't know that we would require it of a new one because it may require retrofitting and other things. So I don't know. We hadn't discussed that, so I'd have to look at the specific language, but I don't know that that would trigger it.
Pardon me, I may have misunderstood you. I thought you meant if one was already in, would the new business have to continue to operate it? Or are you asking if an old car wash had a new owner, would they have to upgrade?
Yeah, it's the latter. So, or if, or if the ownership of the business changed, so let's say that that a previously existing car wash that didn't have a recycling system is sold to a new owner, would that trigger, under the ordinance, wasn't clear to me, would that trigger a requirement? Or that grandfathering run with the business?
Mr. President, members of the council, Councilwoman Strater. Now, this is clearly only to new construction because there are things that have to be approved by the city because it does require the city engineer sign off. So if it's already an existing business, unless they change, like if they expanded the use, the expanded use may require it at least for the expansion portion of it. But existing one that's already there, there's a number of them already here. No, they wouldn't have to change because of the way this ordinance is written.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, thank you, Warren, and obviously, thank you, Bill. That makes sense to me. I think there's a really good rationale for this requirement. I think it's grounded in a lot of discussions that we've had in terms of water being our most precious resource, the need for us to think long-term about conserving our water supply, especially, you know, in, here in Meridian. And while we have a great water supply and we're very blessed that we have an excellent aquifer, which we're very happy about having. If we have huge water users come in that are not recycling, it could really put a strain on it. So I appreciate you bringing this forward.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Warren, in reading the ordinance, and I guess I'll, I'll kind of lead. I'm struggling with this one a little bit. When you, when you read the first, whereas it's somewhat vague and that it just reduces the impact on the environment and city water and wastewater systems. I think we're really fortunate that the free market right now is, is leading on this and doing it voluntarily. And if, if we're asking, if we're going to now mandate them to do that, I struggle a little bit that we don't have any metrics about what we're trying to achieve. Reducing water into our system by X amount percentage or waste by X amount percentage because I think that there's a lot of ways that without, I think some stronger sideboards on this, a less than ethical business could try and find a workaround to meet the intent of code with, or to meet the letter of the code without maybe meeting the intent of what we're doing. And so I'm struggling on this particular one because the free market is already doing this to then come in and, and mandate them to do it. It just seems a little bit like a head scratcher for me. So as staff, as you guys discussed, we want to reduce, we want them to reduce their water by a certain amount. I mean, is there a best practice in the industry that we would want to attain for? What are our car wash owners in the valley? What are they achieving by the systems that they've already implemented?
I appreciate the, the question, Councilman Cavanagh. We did ask some of those questions, in fact, and we talked to a lot of the manufacturers or some of the manufacturers who, who produce these systems. And there is a, there's a, there's a fairly good range, although, you know, twenty percent difference between certain manufacturers of this equipment and other manufacturers of this equipment. And we, we struggled with the idea of actually saying, okay, it has to recycle, recycle, you know, seventy percent or sixty percent of the stream. And, and we thought about putting it in here, but ultimately we thought, well, maybe that's a step too far, too far at the moment. And we just asked them to go ahead and put in a recycling system. It appears that most of the manufacturers of these systems have a targeted range that all seems to be acceptable. And that gives them more flexibility than us saying it has to be this. And then they come back and say, well, we got this manufacturer we'd like to use and, and they're, you know, a few percent one way or the other of that, is that okay? So I appreciate that. It's certainly a conversation we had, but we struggled with trying to set that number and, you know, you know, felt like it might be a little onerous at this stage, but that's why we didn't put it in there.
Mr. President, maybe a-
Councilman Cavanagh, go ahead.
Warren, who, if, if car washes are our biggest user, what industry is our second largest user of water?
It's a fair question. I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head.
And, and Mr. President, the only reason why, why I ask that is it feels like that we're doing this because they're the largest user. And to me, if, if this is the direction the council wants to go, I want to make sure that we're kind of forecasting, this is the reasons why. And if other users and other industries start to eclipse the same amount, would we then impose the same expectations on them? So we're not just focused on the industry, we're, we're focused on users. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. I think the reason that we're looking at this one is we know that the technology exists for them to recycle.
I'll chime in, Warren, you want, want our thoughts and whatnot? I think there's incentive built in, as you mentioned, for them to install recycling. If they're coming in, building a new one, it's in their best interest to do so. It does save them money, it hits the bottom line, the better R. O. I. From the city perspective, I think we want to do this because that, you mentioned it, the treatment costs and the capacity that we have, that's huge on our end and for all users because that's going to have a major cost if we have to increase that, add capacity to that. So anything we can do on that front end and they have that incentive, I think is a good thing to, to require this, just to make sure that you don't have one person coming in just trying to, you know, do whatever. But, but there is that incentive for industry already to do it. But, and I think it's a big savings to everybody on the back end. And so I, I think it's a good thing to do. Any other comment on this one?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Borton.
Just the whereas is sometimes the ordinances are, are strengthened because they're referred to over time. To have a few of those, you've probably done it to, to lay out some of the, the business case to it using examples, numbers, right? If you're able to say whereas a a car wash has a hookup fee and, and monthly bill of approximately X and installation of these systems often costs, cost Y and it saves them. Just something that recounts that analysis that you've done, showing that not only great for the environment, but it has the business case that you've described. Probably already have that data. That's helpful in ordinances like this when they're referred to seven years ago or seven years down the road and we're wondering what was the reason behind its passage? A little more meat in the whereas tells some of that story. It doesn't change the underlying regulation, but I think it helps the future users understand why we got there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments on this? All right, is it? You got good feedback, Warren? Have any questions?
Oh, if I understand correctly, bring it back with a few tweaks and we'll go from there. Is that?
I think so. All right. Item number twenty-eight. Now we're going to the other end of things. I mean, that's responsibility for sewer services on private property.
Councilman President, members of the council. This is an item that actually came before you several weeks ago. And there was a lot of debate, it kind of went down a singular path of talking about common driveways. And so we went back and prepared a little more information and I'm going to talk about that tonight and share some other things with you. It's, I, it's, I, I want to let you know that the actual nexus for the change here had nothing to do with common driveways when we did it. So the ordinance, as it currently reads, basically talks about when you cross a property line, the jurisdiction of your sewer service changes. And that works great in most single-family residential home type situations. But what about commercial or multifamily? Where there, we have sewer, sewer lines that go all over inside that development and they're all on private property. They never cross a, a property line. So we felt like we had to provide some other sideboards to this or some clarification because we have had some questions about, okay, in a apartment complex, where does the responsibility of the homeowners association or the apartment complex owners start and stop? And so all we did was we wanted to add language that said, basically, it's, if, if it crosses into the public right of way, we're responsible for it. If it's on private land, you are unless it's in an easement. If it's in an easement, then we're responsible for it because we have no legal right to essentially maintain and operate our system outside of an easement. So it's where the easement boundary is. So that was our desire. If I can figure out how to make this work, that was not it. Which button do I push? Oh, it didn't go. That's what it does. I am not seeing it. But if you're seeing it, that's oh, there's the first one. I had to hit it twice. Okay, so this is kind of an example, just a quick little sketch of the example of an apartment complex where we have a sewer and a water line that comes in. We have an easement that covers those. If we had a service coming from either one of those buildings, the jurisdictional boundary would essentially be where the easement begins and ends. And that's what we wanted to address. So that's what the, the tweak to this actually accomplishes. It just basically says if it doesn't cross into a public right of way, then the easement language applies and the easement says where that boundary line is. So that's what we were hoping to clarify. Now, because we, the, the conversation went to the common driveway thing, I have some scenarios for you that I want to talk about and share with you just a little bit. Because common driveways have been a conundrum and a problem for a long time from a public works perspective. They present a maintenance difficulty. And I think we came several months ago with Bill Parsons and had a conversation about that and shared some of the, the challenges that we have. Those are very narrow. Getting the, the big back truck up in and out of there is very, is not very convenient. And it's also a little scary when you're trying to back that thing in and out. Sometimes there's cars and one thing or another around. So we'll talk a little bit about that and where we've gone and right now. So this is the typical picture of a common driveway without any of the utilities in the private or in the common driveway. So they're out in the public roadway. And then one of the things that we used to do, this is kind of the evolution, if you will, of where we've gone when it comes to services, sewer and water in common drive. We used to put a public sewer main that's represented in green with the little green circles being manholes. And that went all the way up the common driveway and the services ran off of it. It's, I think it's important to say that the water lines have always had meters out next to the right of way and private services that went down the common drive. That's the way they've always been and they still are today. The only thing that's changed is how we deal with the sewer. And the reason for that is under this scenario, we had to get back trucks and CCTV trucks back to the back of that common driveway, which was not fun and, and not convenient for the neighbors either. So we went from this scenario to another scenario where we put services from the main lines out in the main roadway, both sewer and water, all the way through there. That meant for this little example where you have three houses, you had a total of six lines, public work or water and sewer lines, they were private because they were the service lines. But you also had gas, phone, power, all of these other utilities in this twenty-foot swath. And it was a bunch of spaghetti running underneath the roadway and it presented some challenges as well. So where we are now, just so we're clear, is we now, the, the water lines haven't changed, but on the sewer line, we actually install a jurisdictional manhole at the right of way. And then the line, the rest of the, the balance of the sewer line going up the common driveway is actually private. And it is the responsibility of the homeowners association or I will say the homeowners to operate, maintain that. That's who maintains that is up to the, to the, essentially the developer and how he puts it in the C. C. and Rs. Most infrastructure that is in a common lot is maintained by the H. O. A. But I think they have the ability to write those in however they see fit. So whether they, you know, write it up so the H. O. A. cares for it or whether they write it up so that the homeowner cares for it, I couldn't tell you, it's outside of our ability to control. But I think most of them are probably essentially maintained by the H. O. A. because they're in a common lot. That's the current practice. Because that keeps our trucks and our maintenance vehicles out of the common driveway. Now, I know some of the concern that you guys had was, well, that puts a burden on those potentially, on those three homes to maintain that segment of sewer line. And that could be correct or it could be the entire H. O. A., I'm not sure. Depends on how they set it up. But I also want to kind of give maybe just a little piece of information that's perspective. These sewer lines, when they put, we put them in, we expect them PVC lines and, and these manholes to last a hundred years. If they are C. I. P. P. lined, they can go another fifty. So it, and that's a fairly inexpensive process in comparison. So just for some perspective, with relatively little maintenance, that line will last a hundred and fifty years, which will probably be as long as some of those homes will be there. So I just wanted to provide that as a piece of information that might be valuable to the conversation and to your consideration. But this ordinance change really doesn't change that at all because we're still saying the jurisdictional boundary or the service is at the public right of way. Without an easement in that common driveway, we couldn't go in there anyway, not legally.
President.
And so I just stand for questions.
Councilwoman Strater.
Just so I understand. The biggest concern I would have is trying to get multiple homeowners to work out how to pay for something at the same time. That, that'd be more my concern. So now I'm looking at your diagram. So then is it true that now the way we do it, each homeowner has a line coming off of the main sewer? And so they each individually would be responsible for their line to the public street? Or do they all share one line that branches off?
So each home would have a four-inch sewer service that would come from their home out to the common driveway. In the common driveway, there's going to be an eight-inch sewer main, although it will be a private main. So they will all tap in to that private main. So each homeowner would be responsible for their service, for sure, their four-inch service that goes to the main. But it could be the homeowners association or the, the homeowners, those three homeowners, responsibility to maintain that eight-inch main for that common driveway segment. It would depend on how the developers set that up in the C. C. and Rs. I can't tell you how they, they're going to do that. I, I don't know. Usually, I will just say this, usually infrastructure that's in a common lot, which a common driveway is, is maintained by the homeowners association. For instance, they have asphalt there, it's an asphalt drive. Who maintains the asphalt? Is it the three? Or is it the H. O. A.? Typically, it would be the H. O. A. that would come in and do the asphalt. It's the same kind of a scenario. Who's maintaining the asphalt driveway? Who's maintaining the asphalt driveway back there? Is it the three owners or is it the HOA because it's in a common lot? I think that's up to the developer how they set it up. But typically, that's the HOA.
Walk me through this then. So first question, how how often are we fixing these lines?
Well, fixing it probably, you know, depends on which scenario you're talking about. Whether you're talking about the four inch lines that run all the way out to the road or whether you're talking about a main line. We don't, if it's a main line like this, we don't go in. We have some of them where we do have a public main that goes up the common driveway. That's the way we used to do it. We haven't done anymore. We don't do it anymore. The issue is not that it is a maintenance headache. The issue is that every three to four years, we go in and we clean it and we do a CCTV inspection of it, just preemptively to make sure it's functioning and working correctly. That means we have to have access clear to the back of that common driveway with that big back truck. And I don't, I'm not necessarily speaking of you guys, but I don't think people a lot of times appreciate how big that truck is. It is big. And when you see it try and negotiate some of these easements and things and get down on the manholes and other places, it it it. I know I've even been surprised when I'm like, holy cow, there's, you know, we've had to make changes to how we require easements when they go around corners because it takes a lot of turning radius to get that thing around there. So.
Mr. President.
Councilman Burden.
So when when these developers submit plans for development, instead of putting like again, the burden on these homeowners or HOAs, couldn't we require them to design their subdivisions so that our trucks could get back there a little bit easier so we could still work on? It's happening three or four times, excuse me, every three or four years. And it's is it a day? It's an afternoon? Is it a morning? Is it pretty quick process or?
I I couldn't tell you. It's not a whole morning just to do that one little segment. They'll they'll come in and maybe do a subdivision and they'll they'll work on it. That'll take, I don't know, probably the better part of an hour to get back in their setup, clean.
That situation, I would rather I'd rather deal with a little noise and a little inconvenience as opposed to potentially having to fix a problem that could cost quite a bit of money for a private citizen that doesn't have access. Seems a little bit.
Warren question. If let's say lot number four, we got six kids and one of them has a habit of flushing the teddy bear down the toilet all the time. And they call a sewer service, they would come in and they could clean out that line to where it's plugged. I'm assuming some of these sewer companies have ability to go into the eight inch line to also clean that out or to unplug that.
Yeah, Councilor, or President Ogden, yeah, many of them, many of them do. They have the same kind of equipment that the city does, or in some cases, smaller versions of that equipment.
Yeah, yes, Councilwoman Pearl.
Sorry. And so the the newest structure that you described, how how they're being installed currently, how long has it been city the city been installing with with that particular process? And can you shed some light on the timing of why why we're having the discussion now versus when this method started being used? Is that question clear?
I I think I understood the first part, but I don't know if I understood the second part.
Okay, so you're you're describing that there is a main section of sewer. There's an eight inch line that goes up the common drive and then there's four inch lines to individual homes, right? That that method of of installing the sewer lines, when did that begin?
Councilwoman Pearl, I I'm not sure, but we've been doing it, I think, at least a couple of years that that's been in the process. So it was a matter of how we put, maybe it was in the last update of the design standards. I can't remember or the specifications. But we we've modified that at the request of our operations team because they came back to us and said they didn't like maintaining these sewer lines at the back of these common driveways, especially they don't like backing out of these common driveways. Because there's nowhere to turn around. So they've got to pull in there with these great big trucks and then they have to back out of these common driveways. It's narrow and there's lots of sometimes things around and and they just felt like it was unsafe. So, yeah.
Councilmembers, so I think we're getting a little bit off on the topic of private drives. So the ordinance change doesn't change anything that we're doing with private drives. We are following this last picture that Warren described and have been doing it for some time. The only way to fix the private drive problem is to not have private drives. There's consequences to that, right? Developers are not going to like that proposal. In our world and fires world, we would love to have just regular streets and subdivisions that have full access for our vehicles, their vehicles. So I think the private drive issue is a bigger issue, right? I don't know that we can solve that. What our ordinance changes, though, as Warren described, was specifically related to where we're required to do maintenance and where the resident is required to do maintenance. So all it's doing is changing it from saying the property line to saying the property line or an easement. And so like the apartment building, we would be in charge of it within the easement. On the private drives, we are not responsible until it crosses the property line or an easement. What Warren mentioned is we do have some of, when we first started doing private drives and we didn't know all the things about private drives, we did have some of our city infrastructure that would go up into the private drives. Those would have easements and we would be responsible in the easement. So hopefully that helps clarify a little bit is that we aren't actually trying to change anything about private drives. They're a problem. But we're trying to clarify under most conditions where we are responsible and where the homeowner is responsible.
Yeah, I think I apologize if thank and thank you for coming up. So this ordinance change really wouldn't change anything in the common driveway. The discussion that I think you're having and is around, do we want the infrastructure to go up the driveway as public infrastructure? Or do we want it to be private? The jurisdictional boundary, even if we wanted, if you decided you wanted it to be public, we would just require an easement. And this ordinance language would remain the same because it would either be at the easement boundary or the right of way. So they're kind of two separate issues. They're related, but they are kind of two separate issues.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Pearl.
So I I was following that. I didn't, I wasn't confused about what it is that we were discussing. And the reason I was asking about the timing of when this method started was because I'm trying to understand if we've been doing this for a while, why the ordinance is being brought now versus earlier versus was there something that spurred this? Like an event that caused it was there? I mean, that's the context I'm trying to get, not about what we're doing with private driveways as much as why are we having this discussion currently? What has brought this about?
I appreciate that, Councilwoman Pearl. The the main reason that we actually started discussing this had to do with apartment complexes, to be honest with you. And we had conversations from owners of apartment complexes who were like, is it the back a curb at the edge of the parking lot that we is the jurisdictional boundary? Where is it? And we were like, well, it's the easement. We can't go outside the easement. But then we realized it doesn't actually explicitly say that in the ordinance. So we just wanted to provide some clarification that said in a apartment complex type scenario or a commercial development like, you know, a shopping center, it's wherever the easement boundary is because there won't be a public right of way or a property lot. And that was the nexus for the change. It had nothing to do with common driveways. I just happened to get into the conversation.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Burton.
To that point, that's spot on. I thought it makes good sense. It provides clarity upfront, early on, the literal legal description from the easement, the public right of way description to know where responsibilities, who has what on either side of that line. It seemed like a really good cleanup improvement. That drastic.
Any other comments? Mr. Stewart? Oh, yes, Lorelei.
I ask for, I guess, some additional, I know this is not necessarily, but do you guys want to have additional conversation around the bigger common drive issue? Or is that something I know that's probably not?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Burton.
Do we put easements in all private driveways? Those common drives, not at all?
Not anymore.
So that would be a future discussion topic among councils if they want. And then we we can put this in and then that. If we go that route, then that's in place and move move forward. So Councilwoman Pearl.
Mr. President, I apologize. I missed Councilwoman Borton's question. Did he ask?
The last one?
Yep.
Do we put utility easements, water sewer easements in the common driveways? As a requirement, do not.
Not anymore.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Strater.
Do we have any common driveways in Meridian that are not covered by an HOA that we know of? I guess that'd be the follow up I'd ask for because not like to hold this up, but just as a detail to check up on. Because I'm just, I I understand this is like very unlikely. But let's say in 50 years, there's a common driveway where there's no HOA and something breaks and the three homeowners can't agree or something like that. Like, would we accept payment from one of them, do the work on behalf of all of them? And then when those other homes are sold, we would expect them to pay in? Or I I'm just, I I understand that's really like out there in a thread, but I'm just, those are the kinds of things I'm worried about, things that we don't anticipate yet that are just those fringe cases where somebody gets saddled with a $20,000 bill because the two other homeowners in their HOA list common driveway can't agree with them. You know, we can't have something like that happening. So because I'm just asking for like, maybe not for the ordinance, but just like, I think you guys need to think ahead of like the playbook of like, how are you going to handle those scenarios?
I'm not aware of whether there are common driveways out there that are not part of an HOA. Common driveways are a relatively new thing. I've been here at the city 13 years and the first few years I was here, I never heard of them. And then all of a sudden they became the end thing because they were cheaper than cul-de-sacs to put in.
So Councilwoman Strater, one of the things that we can do in that scenario is if it became a public health emergency, we are able with proper legal noticing to tell them, hey, we're we're going to come on your property and fix these things and you will be responsible for the costs. And we can put those costs as a lien on the property with all the proper noticing. It has to get to the level of creating the public health emergency. But we do have the ability to fix it and make them responsible for the costs.
Councilwoman Strater.
I'm sorry, I'm really worried that we're just going to go down a rabbit hole now. So I'm trying really hard to hold myself back from that. But, you know, like, not that different than, remember, before my time, there was a whole subdivision that had a problem with like their oh, hello, I'm blanking. Their septic tanks. And didn't we have to come in and we had to like bring sewer to that neighborhood? It was an emergency, but like, how did we work that out with them? I'm curious, did we expect them to pay for it all at once? Was it a condition of annexing into the city? Like, how did how did that happen? Because it's not that different than this.
I think you're referring to the place below Kentucky Ridge.
I think so.
Forgot the name of that that suburb. Yeah, Meridian Heights. And that was, that was a very involved process. I was in council at the time. And, yeah, I don't want to go through that again.
Yeah, so members of the council, Councilwoman Strater or Councilwoman Strater. Yeah, Meridian Heights in Kentucky Ridge. They, the city went through a process, they had their own sewer lagoon. It wasn't septic tanks. They had their own sewer lagoon that they operated privately. But they pumped the solids from that and land applied them to the farm adjacent. And the farmer was the the agreement that was coming to an end and the farmer didn't want to allow them to do that anymore. He wanted to sell the property and develop it. And and so there was a that process took years in the making. But ultimately, this city did enter into an agreement where they took over the system. The 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 landowner that owned the land application site, as well as those people, all contributed to the cost of that. And they were required, I think they ended up passing a bond that they, it was a 20 year deal where they had 20 years to pay their share of the cost unless they sold their home. And then it was due on sale. And so they're still in that process. Some of those homeowners out there are still in the process of paying for that via bond. Because because the Kentucky, the Meridian Heights, Kentucky Ridge organization, I can't remember their official name now. But they actually had gone through the process to become a entity that could bond or ask for a bond. So they paid for it. It was a very convoluted process, but yeah, it took years in the making.
Okay, so I guess it, yeah, I I guess I just ask you to ta- take away that scenario I gave you and think through how you guys would recommend that we handle it. Especially if a bond is not an option for a private homeowner and it's a significant hardship, you know, especially for an older resident. Like, how would, what would we do? Like, we'd have to figure that out, right? So I don't think it affects the ordinance, but I I think that is just something that we need to think through now, not when it happens. Thanks.
Councilwoman, yes, Mr. Neri.
President, members of council, Councilwoman Strater. I mean, I I think some of that scenario we have thought through. You have situations where you have older homes that are in the county that have a failed septic system. We have sewer available to them, so they want to hook up. We have work with property owners on that scenario. You have county subdivisions off, say, off of Franklin or off of Overland that are all on their own systems as well. Many times it is going to be developer driven. I mean, if a developer wants to rebuild that subdivision or or enhance that subdivision in some way, they're going to be a participant in that kind of thing. So unless the entire system was failing, which is what was happening in Meridian Heights, most of our are going to be very small, one at a time types of of situations. And we have resolved almost all of those I could think of with the with the property owners.
Just to might weigh in on that, I I think there'd be a way through the billing process to work out payment plans because they're hooked to the city systems. I mean, we we would have to explore that to see if that's the mechanism. But so if they have a big, big bill, they can't pay. They want to pay, but they can't come up with lump sum, you know, is is that is that an option? I I don't know. Or chance, does it sound like it happens that often? But I think there'd be options out there to explore.
Mr. President.
Yes, W. G. Bonjaro.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Driveways, is that correct?
I'm going to go there since Councilwoman Strater brought in the 50 year scenario. We have a lot of subdivisions, sorry if I'm yelling. We have a lot of subdivisions where we have the common driveways. And part of my requirements is that common driveway has to be maintained 365 days a year for fire, police and AMS. And if that HOA goes away and we get another snowmageddon and house number four catches fire, I mean, we have no recourse. So I think common driveway should be a a topic that we all should talk about, you know, get with planning and everybody. Because I'm I'm with Warren. I was like, what are these things? And I mean, I can see why they do it because it's it's a an efficient way to get more bang for their buck. But for fire police, these guys, Public Works, it it's a pain. It really is.
Appreciate that, Chief. I think we did about a year ago, cut the common lots from six to three. We we had it. So so partway there. But anyway, anything else that you need, Warren?
Oh, so if I understand correctly, just to to reiterate, bring it forward pretty much as is because it really is irrelevant to the common driveway conversation. And if you guys want a common driveway conversation, you'll tell us in the future.
That's right.
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you, Warren. Thank you, Lorelei. All right, that's the end of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Burton. A motion to adjourn. All those in favor say, say aye? All ayes, we are adjourned.
Welcome to tonight's regular city council meeting. For the record, it is Tuesday, August ninth, 2022, and it's 6:00 PM. And to get started, we are going to have roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here. All are present, and the next order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please rise as we do the.
To the flag. One nation under God. Into this fold. Liberty.
Our next item is a community invocation by Pastor Vinnie Hankey of Valley Life Community Church. So please join in the invocation or take this as a moment of personal reflection.
City council members, thanks for having the opportunity to be with you. I hope your summer's been full of rest and refreshment.
Allow me to pray for you. God, thank you for this evening. We thank you for the city of Meridian. We thank you for the leadership provided by the council. And we ask tonight, as they conduct the business of the city, that you might fill them with wisdom, with discernment. It would help them to speak wisely. It would help them to listen to the needs of the citizens and neighbors in the city well, and that you would guide their actions according to your will. We ask ultimately, God, that the city of Meridian would be a city that would be full of love and kindness, that you would protect our first responders as they care for us and serve us. You would be with the students, the families, and the teachers as they prepare for the new school year. But ultimately, God, you would be glorified in this city. We ask this through the name of Christ, your son. Amen. I bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
No changes to the agenda as published. It appears so I move that we adopt the agenda.
Motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Any comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Agenda is adopted. Next item is the public forum clerk. Do we have anybody signed up to speak at public forum?
Mr. President, we did not.
Okay. Moving on to the action items. Our first item is continue to a public hearing from July 26th. Regarding our community development block grant program for the year 2022 through 2026. And it's about the consolidated plan. So with this public hearing. I think Crystal, did you want to give a brief comment before we go to public comments if there are any?
Just a reminder that this is the plan to provide some guidance for how we'll be spending our CDBG funds for the next five years, and then also the action plan is included, which is the specific projects that we'll be funding for the upcoming year.
Great. Thank you, Crystal. We have seen that presentation, and so fully understand that. Is there anybody signed up for the public hearing, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, possibly. I have Tony Allison and board members, but this may not be the right topic. It's Tony here. Is this you here for something later? With the community development block grant? Fantastic. I'm sorry. Come on up.
Come on, come on up. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I am Tony Allison at 1108 Northwest Fourth Street here in Meridian. And I'm just representing the senior center along with a gaggle of my board members. And we're just here to support the grant request for a down payment on a new van for the senior center. And I just want to thank you for your consideration.
Great. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
We have anybody else signed up?
Mr. President, that was the only sign up.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or online who'd like to comment? If so, use the raise your hand feature, and we can bring you in. All right. We don't have anybody online, no one in the audience raising their hand. Resolution is under item number five, so we can do that vote right now instead of having people wait until that order of business, which could be quite later in the evening. So what's the pleasure? Councilman Borton.
Yeah, just before I close the public hearing, I just wanted to say thank you publicly again to Crystal. We've got a crowd here. Everyone needs to know the great work that you do in administering this program every year, providing opportunity, ample opportunity for the public to see the successes that we have with it, and to provide comment on what we do year over year, and it's grown. And you just do a wonderful job. So we're pretty blessed to have you administer this program. So thank you again. But with Mr. President, with that, I move that we close the public hearing on the CDBG 2022-2026 consolidated plan.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing on the community development block grant. And I missed all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those opposed? The audience have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
If it's permissible, I'd like to act on the resolution. It's identified as number five. It's resolution 22-2339. Again, we've gone over this in detail. Having folks from our senior center community, members of the board, we appreciate you taking the time to come out here. It's an excellent example of an important part of our community that benefits from the opportunities that this program provides. So we appreciate you taking the time to come out and be a part of it. Mr. President, I move that we approve resolution 22-2339, approving the submission and adoption of the CDBG five-year consolidated plan.
I have a motion second to adopt resolution 22-2339. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater.
Aye.
Burton. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All eyes motion carries. All right, we'll go back up to item number two. And thank you, folks. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, but if you leave, I understand. But item number two, second reading of ordinance number 22-1988. It's also a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak to this?
Mr. President, we do. One in person, one online. In person is Phil Reynolds.
Okay. Please come forward. And Phil, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Phil Reynolds, and my address is 6423 North Salvia Way, Meridian, Idaho, 83646. Members of the city council and staff, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak on this item. I spoke before you two weeks ago, asking you to please keep this agenda item set as is, as approved previously. I won't go into detail, or I won't repeat what I talked about last, at the last meeting on this subject. But what I will say is, I hope, or I'm asking you to please get your priorities in order. And by that, I'm saying we have a pressing matter that's impacting our community in an extremely negative way. I'm sure the chief of police is aware of this. There's a growing, serious, growing problem of methamphetamine and fentanyl that is in our community. And to me, keeping our communities and our neighborhoods safe is a much higher priority than political posturing. And we are still going to have representation if you leave this item as approved prior. If you change it, we're still going to have representation. That's not impacted. But we've spent two meetings and countless hours of staff time on this subject, when as a member of the community, I would much rather have our staff and our city council working on keeping our communities safe. That's a much higher priority to me as a resident. So I'm hoping that you'll think long and hard before you vote to pass this, and start thinking about where the priorities are. And start working with staff and our chief and our sheriff to keep these drugs out of our community. Because to me, that's a much higher priority than political posturing. Thank you very much for your time.
Any questions for Phil? All right. Thank you, Phil. Chris, you said somebody's online?
Mr. President, next, allowing to talk, Joe Greer.
Welcome, Joe. If you could state your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you speak? Get a little closer to the microphone.
Possibly. It's connected to my camera, which is not on.
That's all right. We can hear you.
Okay. My name is Joe Greer. I'm at 4240 West Lovegood Lane, Meridian, 83646.
Go ahead, Joe.
I just, I wanted to take a minute to, as you guys know, I was on the districting committee. But with several meetings and hearings to lay out the districting per what city council had asked us to do. And we had a lot of counsel from from city legals, so we followed all of the guidelines. However, when we did go to number the districts, it was arbitrary. We didn't have a rhyme or reason for where the numbers were going. We just did them in an order. And so after seeing a, an ad or article in the Idaho Statesman, which was a little disturbing, I don't feel that anyone messed up. I just don't feel that this was really an issue that anyone was looking at. But I do support changing the districts to align, align with the current city council members. I feel that that makes the most sense. It's going to save people time and money, as was just stated, that we want to be spending our time and money on other things. So that's really all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for Joe? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, anybody else?
Mr. President, that was everyone who signed up in advance.
Hey, anybody else in the audience who wanted to speak to this issue? If not, it'll be on the agenda next week for the third reading. So we will move forward to item number three. It's a public hearing for Bright Star Overland, H 2022-0044. And we'll begin with staff comments. Sonya, I guess it's.
Good evening, council. Give me just a moment here, please. All righty. Item number three on the agenda is, let me get my hearing outline together here. It was for a development agreement modification. This site consists of .59 acre of land, its own CG, and is located at 2940 East Overland Road. This property was annexed back in 2005 and included in the Dorado subdivision development agreement and subdivision plat. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is mixed use regional.
Sonya. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just don't know if you were planning to have a slide that's up. I know sometimes it may be up on your computer, but.
I did not share. Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Cavanagh.
Sorry, Mr. President, didn't mean to interrupt.
I appreciate that. Just a moment.
No problem. Thanks, Sonya.
Try this again. All righty. So the applicant is proposing. Click over just a second. There we go. Provision number 5.16 of the original development agreement limits uses within the overall Dorado subdivision to restaurant, retail, hotel, banks, and office uses. The applicant is proposing to amend this provision to include residential care facilities as an allowed use. For UDC Table 11, 2B2, residential care facilities are listed as a conditional use in the CG zoning district and are subject to the specific use standards listed in UDC 11-4329. If approved, the amendment will allow the applicant to submit a conditional use permit application for the proposed use and proceed forward with development. This is a, excuse me, I'm on the wrong slide here. Get a copy of the concept plan in. It is in your staff report. Single-family residential uses exist to the north of the site and across South Loader Place to the west in Overland Way subdivision. Due to the residential nature of the proposed use, staff is of the opinion it would be an appropriate use adjacent to existing residential uses. Therefore, staff is supportive of the proposed amendment and is recommending approval to council tonight. Written testimony has been received from Jeff Hatch, the applicant's representative. He is in agreement with the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Councilman Burton.
Before, before we have this. Like to just let you folks know that I will be abstaining or using myself from this discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Burton.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Hopefully, we have enough to have a quorum. I will also be abstaining from voting for the same reasons as Councilwoman.
Okay, so there'll be four members, council, hearing this tonight. So with that, would the applicant come forward and present with your name and address? You'll have 15 minutes.
Thank you. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street, Oisy, Idaho, 83714. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. Thank you for your consideration of our development agreement modification this evening. I do have a, you have a presentation.
Don't touch the mouse, Steph. Step away.
Might hit F5. There you go.
Okay. So the location is Long Overland and a street called Loader Place. And so as Sonya had indicated, we have some residential to the northwest. We have some residential to the west, and we have commercial to the south and east. And this particular assisted living center residential care facility is really designed to be geared more towards residents, but we like putting these in a commercial development. We call it a resi-merchall, which creates kind of a buffer from the traditional residential use to more traditional commercial use. We found that to be a fairly effective use of these business parks, where you maybe have a remnant parcel, it's been sitting there for a number of years. Nobody's really doing anything with it. You're usually overparked, and nobody wants you to build on that site. And so in most cases, when we come in and propose this, especially from a commercial standpoint, they're fairly excited about the development because we're not occupying a ton. And from the residential standpoint, single-story, low-profile, very quiet residence. So minimal concerns there as well. As far as our site plan, we did get some comments from neighbor to the north requesting some additional buffering. So we did incorporate that into our site plan, shifting off of our five-foot northern setback and additional 10 feet to increase that buffer from the north to be a good neighbor. Since we're on a street to the west, we have a significant buffer to the residents to the west as well. And as far as the actual development agreement, development agreement itself, intent of it, and talking with. intent of it and talking with the HOA was that they're wanting to abide by the table that the city had. That city has changed over the years and since they clearly defined the actual written uses, this is more of a formality of just including a use that is allowed on a conditional basis to the development agreement. You know, uh, proposed application prior to actually submitting.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions by council? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to testify here?
I'm, Mr. President, only the applicant.
Okay, is there anybody online who would like to testify this? If so, please use, raise your hand feature. Okay, we don't have anybody there. So, Mr. Hatch, do you want to close the public hearing? Are we in closure testimony? Have any final comments?
I'd like to thank the council for your time this evening. And, um, I, I think Bright Star is really excited about Meridian in that, uh, it's been very well received on our last development of this nature, which encouraged us to do another one in Meridian. We're excited about it and we feel that this is a nice product that is a transition from that more institutional style requirement to something that's more. Really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. President, what's your pleasure? Councilman Burton.
This one might be pretty straightforward. So I'm going to move to close the public hearing on item three, H 2022-0044.
A motion second to close the public hearing for H 2022-0044. All those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed. Mr. President. Councilman Burton.
Uh, Mr. Hatch made a pretty, uh, strong and clear presentation that this actually is a little more harmonious with the community to the north. He's wisely made some concessions to try and assist that transition, that buffering. And knowing that this project has to still go through with a, with a CUP application, there's going to be a lot of eyes and attention to detail. All of those considerations seem to clearly support modifying this DA to allow him to proceed as he, as he intends. The staff report was certainly supportive of that. So I'll make a motion to approve 2022-0044 as presented in the staff report of October, excuse me, August 9th, 2022.
A motion, we have a motion second to approve H 2022-0044. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sonya, appreciate the staff board. I agree with Councilmember Burton, pretty cut and dry. My grandma lives in a facility very much like this. I think it's a good compliment used to the existing neighborhood and the commercial. So I'm definitely in favor of this. Very slight subtle change.
So, Mr. Kavner, Councilman Kavner, is that a conflict of interest if your grandmother lives in one somewhere? No.
You don't think she's going to be living in this one?
We don't want to lose a quorum here, so I just want to be sure.
Appreciate your diligence.
All right, with that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Strater?
Aye.
Burton is abstaining. Is that correct? Bro as well? Thank you, Kavner.
Aye.
Horton. Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item number four is a public hearing continued from July 26th for East Ridge subdivision, H 2022-0037. Also on deck for staff comments is Sonya.
Thank you, President Hoagland, Councilman. Um, this was Alan's project, so I'm presenting from him for him tonight since he has moved on. This, uh, request is for a development agreement modification. This development consists of approximately 41 acres of land. It's owned R4 and R15 and is located on the north side of East Lake Hazel Road between South Locust Grove and South Eagle Roads. Little history, um, this subdivision was annexed back in 2017 with the requirement of a development agreement and a preliminary plat was approved at that time as well. In 2019, the development agreement was amended to include additional restrictions proposed by the applicant in response to neighborhood concerns that were inadvertently not included in the original development agreement. The agreement was later amended again in 2021 to include a slightly reconfigured plat replacement of the clubhouse and swimming pool amenities with a dog park, changes to the elevations and removal of requirements pertaining to fencing type and setbacks that impacted a property directly to the west, which changed ownership. The comprehensive plan future land use designation for this property is medium-high density residential. The applicant is proposing to amend provision number 5.1G in the existing agreement, which requires all product in the village area to be single level with a maximum roof height of 25 feet to remove the single level restriction to allow for bonus rooms on a second level. No changes are proposed to the maximum roof height of 25 feet. The applicant is also proposing new concept elevations for the two-level structures, um, as shown, that include a bonus room to be included in the amended development agreement. The existing elevations are shown on the left. Staff is supportive of the proposed change, provided that no second-story windows face lots 2 through 20, block two of East Ridge number one and lots 9 through 18, block two of Lavender Heights subdivision number two. And those lots that I just called out are, um, indicated on this plan right here. Staff also supports the inclusion of the new elevations with the second-story bonus room with the added provision that houses on lots 61 through 97, block one, East Ridge number three, the perimeter lots facing East Ridge number one vary in elevation and home type with no two identical home types on adjacent lots. This is to ensure two-story homes built along the perimeter have variation in architecture and roof lines as viewed from adjacent homes to address neighbors' concerns pertaining to monotonous higher roof lines. Staff is recommending approval, um, with the amended provisions, that I just mentioned and those, that amended provision is shown there on the screen. Several letters of public testimony have been received from neighbors. And they are in opposition to the proposal. Joe and Donna Hardman, Charles Cavolo, Michael Calderon, Debbie Wickham, Jeff Calbertson, Susan and Kevin Quomey and Randy Weeks. Some of the reasons for opposition include, uh, development is geared towards seniors, fewer in the market for two-story homes, changes to roof lines, windows, lighting and noise, concerned about monotonous roof lines creating an undesirable wall effect next to the estate lots, and an increase in, um, home occupants. There are other, other reasons also lifted, listed in these letters if you've seen those.
Thank you, Sonya. Staff, any, uh, council, any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. So Sonya, just want to make sure I understand the applicant made a proposal to remove the single story. Then staff, um, also suggested a couple more, uh, conditions, which would be no second-story windows and then no two identical homes next to one another. Um, I didn't see anything in the, in the, um, file as to whether the applicant has, in writing, has agreed to that, but we'll hear from them. But my question is, um, with the, with the proposed elevations that are included, could the, um, applicant at a later time change those elevations so long as there were no second-story windows? Or are they, are they only allowed to use those elevations, uh, because it's, it's part of the DA? Or are they permitted to change those out so long as they meet the criteria that's agreed upon? Because when I think of a concept plan, I don't, usually it's not as detailed as the elevations. It's typically.
These are concept elevations.
Right.
They, they could vary slightly. As far as if the applicant's in agreement with the conditions, the applicant has not communicated to me directly. If they are or they aren't. Did I answer your question?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pearl.
The, the first question, yes. The second one is, is could they change the elevations without an issue with the DA so long as they comply with the conditions? So in other words, these four proposed elevations, they don't have to stay with those exact elevations and floor plans, correct?
Well, the, the elevation shown on the right, there's, um, eight of them. They, they need to substantially comply with those. Um, I'm unsure. I was questioning the applicant and I, I was unsure of his answer whether he was proposing to add the elevations on the right to the existing elevations that are in the agreement now or whether he was removing the existing ones and replacing them with these. So if he could get that answer on the record, um, I wasn't communicating clearly with him. He didn't understand my question, I don't think, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Councilman Burton.
Sonya, to be clear, the existing DA allows those structures to be 25 feet tall, 25 feet tall. And this change still keeps that cap height of 25 feet. So there's no change in that. Uh, there's only a change to allow portion of the second story to be occupied so long as the window faces away from the lots. So the massing is approximately the same under either. Is that correct?
Well, you're correct in that the, the building height is not changing. They are, they are requesting a second level for just the bonus room, but the massing will change for that. Uh, the roof lines are changing, so the massing will change. Whereas the heights before with the single level may not have, um, been 25 feet. Uh, and that is, keep in mind, that is measured per building code. So that is the approximate midline of the roof.
Any other questions for staff? Not, we have the applicant come and. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Lauren Bailey with DevCo 4824 West Fairview Avenue, Boise, Idaho, 83706. Uh, Mr. President, counsel, thanks for hearing us tonight on our DA mod. Um, I don't, I don't want to belabor any of the points. I just want to go over Sonya, Sonya's correct. The original DA allowed for 25-foot roof height. We're not asking to change that. Um, as you can see in the, the drawing she had or the slide she had up, the original designs we submitted, one of those did show a, a window over the garage. We anticipated doing, um, bonus rooms. What most cities in town that we work with, a bonus room is not considered a second story because it's within the framing of the, uh, of the roof line. Um, but Meridian's code doesn't specify that one way or the other. So this, when we got to building permit, we submitted these. The building department came back and said, wait, we don't really have a designation for this. And because it was a condition of the DA, they wanted to get clarification. So in talking to planning staff and the building department, we felt the best thing to do was just come and modify the DA to allow those. Um, but again, no windows are going to face any of the other homes. It only faced the street. And we're not changing the roof height, the allowable. Um, as to the massing, we'd always, I mean, 25 feet was always there and that's what we'd always planned to build. So I don't think anything has changed.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bailey?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Burton.
Does adding a second story, um, let me back up, a single-story house, are they, as, as intended here, customarily 21 feet, for example? And adding the second story requires you to get a little closer to 25, still under the cap, but it, apples to apples is bigger.
I asked that question in this particular style of home and, and what we'd always planned to build. We were, we were close to that range anyway. We're just, we're probably the 23 to 25-foot range depending on which house plan. Um, but adding this is not changing that height, just adding this into the, the roof line that already would have been. And we're not doing it on every home. It's about a third of the homes. So it's not going to be every house that has a bonus room.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
The DA is pretty clear. It says single story. So I guess I'm just, there's a disconnect for me. Um, what other cities do you work in that don't consider a second story a second story? It's just, to me, it's not common sense.
They don't consider a bonus room a second story. If it's, if it's within the roof rafter line, City of Boise and City of Eagle both do not have that in their code. They allow for a bonus room without it being a second story.
Mr. President, thank you. Um, isn't it true, though, that the roof line is going to change? I mean, if I just look at Sonya's elevations, like they don't look, the roof lines don't look the same to me from the first set that you had to the second set. Is the overall mass of the building different?
I think you're seeing different scale on the slide there, but it's not changing. Those were the, in fact, a couple of those you see there, the same house plan. We've just done it. We've done a little bit different architecture, different finishes on the facade. And that's just market, you know, people's taste change, new fads, things like that.
Councilwoman Strater, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate it. Could you just walk me through, I mean, I, I'd like to really go through that in detail. So if I look at, um, Tempe A, let's just pick that as an example, or Chandler A, how, which one of the renderings on the left is that compared to? And explain to me how, how that massing is exactly the same? Because it, it definitely doesn't look the same. It looks taller to me, maybe not as wide.
Sure, I, you know, like I said, these were the examples we submitted at that time. Things change a little, but I, I don't, I asked that question of our architects, of the builder, and they're telling me that it's, it's within those couple of feet difference. There's not much change.
Okay.
Council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Bailey. This is a public hearing on this item. Mr. Clerk, uh, we have people signed up, I assume.
Mr. President, we have many people signed in, only one indicated they wish to testify and they're representing the neighbors, Chuck Cavolo.
Okay, Chuck, come on up, state your name and record, uh, name and address for the record. And, uh, since you're representing the HOA, you have 10 minutes.
I, I don't have a record. I just want to go.
Okay, that's good.
I think I do have a PowerPoint, I believe. Okay, great. Uh, thank you. My name is Chuck Covelo. I live at 6269 South Bosch. I do live in the estate lots subdivision one. And I am here tonight representing the people sitting behind me. Everybody can raise their hand. Okay, so as you could see, this is a very emotional thing to us. We bought our homes. We were told single story. We were told patio homes. We're thinking two, three-bedroom, 12, 13, 14, 1500 square feet. But that's not what we have here in front of us. In fact, I don't even see the square footage in this application at all, to be honest with you. So. Is my PowerPoint? Okay. Okay, sorry. So, you know, we all understand that this type of density is needed. But when you do something like this, it really should require good engineering, smart engineering, smart planning, smart landscaping to meld between one to the other. So when you live in one of these, it doesn't matter which one. You're not affected by your neighbors, or at least minimally affected by your neighbors, right? So back in October 2017, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was four members out of the Black Rock community that stood up and talked about, or I should say, uh, voiced their opinion about additional traffic and density and overall development feasibility and transition from proposed age-restricted housing, transition. Okay, the next month at city council, 38 members showed up stating the same thing. And it was passed. And in June 5th, following year, development agreement signed. Something that I found in the zoning, uh, R15, it says residential developments should orient to surrounding uses, including residential, or excuse me, residential and non-residential areas in a way that encourages compatible development patterns, character and appearances. Appropriately addresses the critical issues of site layout that influences a compatible and integrated neighborhood character, including, but not limited to vehicular access, pedestrian connectivity, building orientations and common spaces. That is in your zoning. What I'm about to show you, I don't think really meets that. But we are where we are and now the builder wants more. Or I show you some pictures. I just wanted to point out to you what we're really talking about. If you take a look at lots 3, 4, 5, 6, on block two there, going up 7, 8, 9, and over to the left, 12, 13, and all the way over to 21, that's what we're talking about. Those are the lots that we live in. That's where we live. And adjacent to this is this, this, this R15 zoning that's taking place. Okay. But what is in our backyards right now? That. That is in our backyards. These houses are 10 feet off the property line with an open vision fence. Does that really meet the design considerations for R15? That layout that these lots are on now occurred after our lots were approved. When we asked the question to cities, realtors, builders, oh, don't worry about it, they're going to be, you know, the smaller homes, they're going to be single story patio homes. Now what we're talking about are homes that are, I don't, I don't even know what square footage is, 2000, 22, 2300 square feet, I, I don't know. Here's another one, 10 feet. How would you like to be in your backyard and have that looking at you every day? There's a wall. From the ground all the way to the top is 38 feet. And that could be built all the way around our lots. I don't think this really meets the intent. So the applicant is wanting to eliminate the single story. So we have issues. Our first issue is noise. Now, I must apologize, I thought when I looked at this information, I thought it showed bedrooms. I thought it showed closets. It looked like bedrooms to me, there's also bonus rooms, also been bedrooms and bonus rooms. It also says draft on some of these things, so I'm not, I couldn't quite know everything that's going on with what they're applying for here. But we think that there's going to be an increase in noise, there's no doubt about it, square footage is going up, there's potentially going to be more people in these houses. Do we know for sure? No, we don't, but it's, it's definitely there a possibility, and these houses are 10 feet from us. It shouldn't be allowed. I mean, these houses are staring right down on the top of us. So we have an issue with noise, and we don't think that it really meets the design considerations for R15. Second issue is this monotonous wall effect. Again, we're 13, the, the, the homes are 13 feet above us. And we believe there will be a monotonous wall effect, because if you look at these three homes right here, these are the ones that were previously approved. You will see the one on the right as the one that goes, you know, it's going to be 25 feet high for the whole entire house, right? Okay, but that's only one out of three. And, and the, and the developer here, or the applicant, just got done saying, well, we're going to have, you know, maybe a third of them, but how do you know? Because part of his application said all the lots, not one particular lot or certain lots, but it could be, there's nothing stopping him. If everybody walked in and said they want a bonus room, there's nothing stopping him. So if you look at the house product, which are the three, the Chandler, the Pima, and the Tempe. The, the Pima is practically the whole entire width. And then if you take the existing one, because it's not in the application, it doesn't say that it comes out, the existing one, Glendale, the one on the right, that doesn't have a bonus room, that's just how it is. You have different house types, different elevations, that could all potentially create a wall effect. So I did talk to the planning department about it, Alan was great, he talked about it and things, and he did write some things, but I think there's a little flaw in what he wrote, and I'll show that to you. It says houses with lots 61 through 97, block 1, impressive East Ridge subdivision number 3, lots 17 through 21, East Ridge subdivision 2, perimeter lots facing East Ridge 1, shall vary in approved building elevations and home types, but no two identical home types. So he's saying no two identical home types and no two identical elevations. But what happens if you put a Chandler A, a Glendale C, and a Pima A? Those are different elevations, different home types in a row, you still have the wall effect. That could still happen. If this is going to be put into this application, this needs to be rewritten. Three, at the East Ridge neighborhood meeting on May 5th, East Ridge Estate neighbors expressed their dislike about bonus rooms because it would not allow for people from above to look down on them and bright lights to be seen at night. Applicants representatives said the windows can be placed in a way so that no one would not be seen, which is not consistent with staff's recommendation. Staff recommendation says facing, well, if you look at the orientation of these lots, the only time with these, that the, these lights would be looking down, or these are, the lights could be seen, or people looking down, is because the orientation are as at 90 degrees. It wouldn't be facing, so the builder could come along and say, well, we're not facing them, but if you look this direction, it would, you could be seen, but it's not facing. If you understand what I'm trying to say, facing is straight on. But if you look at the orientation of these lots, and you look at our orientation of our lots, it's like they're faced this way and we're this way, with an opening of driveways, and it can be seen, but it's not facing. The builder told us they would hide them in a way where they would not be seen, that does not match with this. Issue four, I'll talk about fencing. June 5th, the development agreement, East Ridge Estates, Exhibit B, as a part of that development agreement, which is the findings of fact, conclusions of law and decision in order, has attached to it Exhibit A, which is a staff report. All tied together. In there, it says fencing, all fencing should comply with the standards. And it also says applicants shall construct fencing as proposed. It's black and white, it's right in there. Okay. So, and it, with the first plaque, landscape plan shows six foot tan vinyl fence. That's not what got constructed. I don't know why, and I don't know why there wasn't a public hearing changed. Staff report describes required revisions to the landscape plan, and there was no requirement to change it. And it says that it's supposed to be a six foot tan fence, that's not what we have. I called the building department and asked about, what about the fencing and the permitting and all that kind of stuff? And so they said, well, yeah, they, they come in, they pull permit, they, you know, they pay their fee. I said, does anybody inspect it, does anybody check to see if it meets any requirements like that are put upon it for development application? They said, no. Does anybody inspect it? No. We're emotional. We don't believe here, at, at our meeting, we were never told this as a part of development agreement, we're told to sign the sign in sheet. That sign in sheet is used as an application, we're never told it was going to be used as an application. And also, I'm sorry. Can I have a minute or two?
Wrap up.
I got one more slide after this. Neighbors were, were told to provide their names and email addresses so they could get additional information, no additional information was provided. They weren't told that that sign in sheet was going to be used as a part of the application. And an email was sent requesting the information, and no information was received. We're here tonight to ask you to deny the development application because as submitted, it does not meet the city of Meridian's medium high density residential R15 design considerations for increased noise, notness wall effect in windows and lighting. And we ask you, and I'm just going to make this real briefly, put up the vinyl fence as per the landscape plan that was approved? That's all we're asking for, that is a key thing. If you look at those pictures, if we had solid fencing, it'd make our lives so much better. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Covolo. If you would wait just a second, I think Chuck, the council members might have questions for you. Councilman Gavner.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate your presentation slides also, I think helped to paint a picture. Mike, I think there's some, you touched on a lot, some of the things that are outside of the request, the development agreement, and hopefully we can get some answers on, on staff as well, even though those maybe aren't pertinent to, to the request before us tonight. But your, your point about increased noise has got me kind of, it's got my brain a little wrinkled, and so I'm hoping you can give me a little bit more insight. Is it your belief that just because a bonus room would add additional square footage, that that's, would increase the noise?
Yes, we think anytime you add square footage to a house, there's a potential to be more people there. Especially, and again, I looked at this, that I believe it looked like a bedroom to me. It's, it's a bonus room or a bedroom, is the way it looked like they were applying for. So we're thinking more noise, right? I mean, more people, and the backyards are only 10 feet, or, I mean, it's like from here to there. And this thing is 13 feet high, and then the roof lines are another 25 feet on top of that, right?
Chuck, sorry, Mr. President, Chuck, I think that's the point that I'm trying to get to, is let, let's say every one of those homes, let's say they're 2000 square feet.
Right.
And if they're 2000 square feet without a bonus room, and they're 2000 square feet with a bonus room, is it, is it, is it the square footage that you think is the noise, or is it the bonus room that's annoying?
We think it's another room, which means there's could be more people in there. I don't think it, the applicant is increasing the square footage as a part of this application. He's not keeping the square footage the same. So by, he's adding more square footage, which is another room. We just don't think the intent of when the lots were laid out the way they are right now, it wasn't intended for this. These are regular sized homes, these were supposed to be patio homes, these are supposed to be smaller homes. Now all of a sudden, what we're doing is we're taking a regular sized house on a 45 foot wide lot, I think it's 45 feet, and you've placed them 10 feet behind? I, it, it's going to affect us. And that's why all these people are here.
Oh, I.
You know, I mean, it's emotional, I apologize right now.
It's our homes, and it's our largest.
Absolutely, right, we were told.
I appreciate the passion in everyone's attention.
And we, I mean, we were told, this is what we were told by staff, by realtors, by home builders, don't worry about it. It's, it's, it's patio homes, it's small, right? And you think, okay, you're, they're going to meld this thing in, so be minimal effects or whatever. Nobody ever thought that these houses would be 10 feet behind us with these roof lines, and now all of a sudden they want more.
Yeah.
I, I mean, we're, we're all saying enough is enough. Thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Council, any other questions, at least? Within two steps?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, is there anybody signed up or online who wishes to testify?
Nobody online, and that was the only person that marked they wanted to speak, there are others here, of course.
Is there anybody in the audience who chooses to testify at this time? If so, come on up and state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Okay, we'll give you three. Debbie, speak right into the, I want to pick one and go with that.
One, okay. Debbie Wickham, and I live at 2616 East Brace Drive in East Ridge. And I am opposed to allowing this change, and I just want to say that I bought my lot that we built her home with a builder on, but I work directly with C15 LLC, who is now G20 LLC, who is also the owner of the land above us, he owned our lots. And in my opinion, he profited from selling us our land, he should care about what's also going above us. And I think it's rather shameful that we have to come here and beg for you guys to protect us from our own developer. He should care what's going on behind us and about the fencing and the height. And I want to also say that as we built our home, that Devco, Conger Group, whoever, whatever their names are, multiple names, not one allowance was I ever given, not one change to my floor plan, to my elevation, to my landscape, to my paint colors. They were totally regimented and unwilling to make changes for me. So some of us built, some of us bought homes that were already finished. But I think in the spirit of fairness and how they want us now to work with them, I just think that that's not a cooperative spirit of our neighborhood, or about what's best for our neighborhoods. And I hope that you deny the additional bonus room. Thank you.
Mr. President. Thank you, Debbie, Debbie, don't go too far, Debbie. Yeah. Councilman Gavner.
Thanks. Debbie, thanks for coming up, and it's clear from, from you and the other testimony, there's some frustrations.
A little bit, yeah.
I think that's maybe an understatement.
That's fair.
In, in dealing with the applicant, and, you know, one of the things that's important, we hear this is, this is emotionally led, and I think one of the purposes of the city council, we're essentially kind of hired to separate emotions away from the argument and look at, at the law. And so what's before us today is a request to allow these bonus rooms. And I guess for me, that's the piece of the testimony that I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around is, if the council were to permit this request and a bonus rooms would be added, how does that impact your quality of life as a result?
Well, I agree with Chuck wholeheartedly on the, the representation of this 55 and older, single level neighborhood. I don't know what that con, you know, what thoughts you think of when you hear that, but these are huge elevations. And I happen to work in some new construction industry myself, so I very rarely see single level 55 and older neighborhood homes that have 25 foot high roofs to start with. I think that they're kind of playing a game here a little bit with us, and the fact that they think they aren't going to really change the height of the homes. I think they're purposely building these homes really tall, and then squeezing this bonus room up above to give them, you know, more square footage, which lets them sell the homes for a higher price, which, you know, I'm all for everybody doing their thing and making their income. I, I, I'm really not that kind of person, I just feel a little bit like it's bait and switch, and, you know, choose the words carefully so that we think it really isn't impacting us, but we're really not stupid, and it is impacting our neighborhood.
Thank you, I appreciate you testing.
Thank you.
President?
Yes, Councilwoman Strater.
I have a question for staff, maybe legal staff. So the six foot tan fence, if we look at that requirement, was that a legal requirement? Like if they built an alternative fence that met the UDC standards, but that type of fencing was specifically referenced? What is our remedy if we decide that, was it legally binding? Was it just an example? I just need to understand that requirement.
Mr. President, members of council, Councilwoman Strater, I mean, Mr. Covolo wrote that up, so I, I can tell you if that's, it's, the fact that we'd say a tan fence is a little unusual to me, because I don't think we would ever pick a color of the fence. We normally either say open vision fencing or vinyl, one of the two. So I'm a little perplexed by that particular thing, if it's, if it is a DA requirement, they should have checked that when they pulled a fence permit, we don't normally go inspect fences, they normally would check that, a, a fence permit. But again, and maybe it didn't say, I don't know, so I don't have enough information to know if that was a requirement, if it's in the DA, then it is enforceable.
Mr. President.
Yes. Council, Councilwoman Strater.
Thanks, Mr. President, if the HOA head has a copy of the part of the DA agreement, do you mind sharing? Okay. Yeah, if, if you don't mind providing that to planning staff, so they could take a quick look at that and try to evaluate that while we ask other questions. I don't think we're going to get an answer to my question immediately, but I think it would be good for people to get to the bottom of whether that was a requirement. If that requirement was not met, I'd like to know what the city could do now to enforce that requirement.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strater. And that was a question I had earlier, when, when he was presenting, I was going to ask, who was that open vision fence there development that put that up? Or was it the, the new development, and it sounded like it was the new development? Or the open vision fence was already there, and yeah, why don't you come up, let's answer that question. Fencing, I think fencing is going to be important discussion on this, this topic, so.
The development agreement specifically states exactly what I showed up there, that the fencing is supposed to be installed as per the plan. Okay, and that landscape plan was worth the first phase. It was submitted as a part of the first plaque. But that's not what they constructed, and we don't know why. So now what we're saying is, if we're doing this amendment, can we get the fencing put in as what they were originally supposed to do?
Chuck, question then for you is, was that open vision fencing originally part of your development?
No.
Okay.
So that landscape plan was a part of, that is our development. And it clearly indicates what the fencing, and you will see in there, there's all different types of fencing that are indicated.
Okay.
Open wrought iron fence, black fence, or whatever, and it specifically says this is the type of fence that goes along our lots.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And any further questions before, yes, Councilman Gavner?
President, not meaning to step on your toes, just seeing an eyes from Dean, Chuck, you might want to just reintroduce yourself for the record.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Chuck Covolo, 6269 South Boschway.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Strater.
Could we just hear from the applicant really quick about the fence specifically, if they have anything to add about that? It's a pretty big miss if it's misrepresented and not, didn't come out the way we wanted as a city.
Lauren, if you want to, make sure you say your name again.
Again, Lauren Bailey with Devco, Commissioner Strater. So.
So as Sonya indicated, we had an original application in twenty seventeen. Came back in twenty nineteen and amended the DA. And in that, those upper lot configuration changed. Part of the First Amendment that was required by our neighbor, um, that wasn't, didn't get it put into the final staff report, city asked us to come back and change that, so we did. But part of that was that they wanted open vision fencing between the western boundary and their property. So because of that, when we came back to change the lots and make that adjustment, we changed the landscape plan and did open vision all the way around. Not out on the roadway, but we did it around the the neighborhood, just so that was all the same. That fence was installed prior to any of the home sales um for the first phase. And it, that fence is is on those property owners' property. It's not on our property with the second.
President, sorry. I'm just going to restate what you just said to me, so I I understand. So what you're saying is you did an amendment in twenty nineteen and you put in the open vision fencing. Okay, so I guess a question for city staff, then I'm going to turn to them. So was that, was there a public hearing as part of that process?
Counsel, there there was a public hearing as part of the development agreement modification. That is standard process. I'm unsure, um, if I wasn't the planner working on it, if that was a topic of discussion with the amended DA or whether that was a plan that was not the topic, but the fencing plan or that just got changed as part of that inadvertently or under the radar, however you want to say it. So maybe the applicant can answer that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
That 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 was, had to do with the clubhouse.
Correct, but we also changed, so that was that was later. We changed the layout of the lots because um we we did, if we want to go way back and start over at the beginning. So our Movado product, we did the four pack units and we designed that same product here. It became a nightmare for the building department staff and our builder at Movado. So we came back and said, hey, everybody's struggling with this product, even though they love neighbor or the owners loved it and it turned out great. It was a struggle for the city. So we came back and said, all right, we've got to do this different. It's too hard to navigate. Came back with a new layout for the development. When we did that, we updated the landscape plan, bought in a new landscape plan because we had to for everything. And in that, we changed the fencing. So nobody was trying to pull anything over anybody's eyes or or do anything in the dark at night. It all came to city council, it was all reviewed, it was all a new application in front of planning staff and everybody. And like I said, this fencing was installed prior to anyone buying a home where they're living today. So you know, it nothing was shady, nothing was in, like that wrought iron fencing costs more than the vinyl fence. We thought we were doing something nicer. But we did decide to do more of an open vision because we had to do that on the other side per our agreement with the neighbor.
We do have an individual who wishes to testify that hasn't testified yet. So, uh, sir, did you want to come on up and? Or if I was thinking of the gentleman behind you, are you going to yield your 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 time to Chuck?
Covelo, six two six nine South Boschway. I think if you take a look at the landscape plan as a part of the the amendment, you will see that it says fencing per phase one. You want to take a look at that? That's what I, that's what I read in the landscape plans because I went back through the history and I looked at the first plan for this and it said fence, the tan fence and everything. And then I thought, and I could be wrong, I could be wrong, but I I believe with the other with the amendments and the final plats or whatever there was in there, every landscape plan after that indicated per phase one. Thank you.
Sir, did you want to say if you would name and address in three minutes?
Jeff Culbertson, twenty six thirteen East Brace Drive, Ridian eight three six four two. I appreciate your time. Taking the emotions out of this, I'm new to the area and I did my research contacting the city planner back in April and contacted Alan Taffenbach, I apologize if I mispronounced that, to get a copy of what was supposed to be behind the house and the lot that I purchased for seven figures, knowing that this was going to be an age restricted community with patio style homes. So you talk about quality of life and peace and quiet and serenity. I don't have a bunch of families run around, no offense at my age, I don't have a bunch of kids run around in the backyard or being loud. Then I followed up again before I made the final payment on July second because there was a revision because I was under the assumption that was a twenty five foot setback. Was very frustrated here that it was a ten foot setback after I already purchased a lot. And to find out today that the representative that came up here is trying to make changes and doesn't even have a presentation or facts straight in a lot of what ifs. We're a community of homeowners that are passionate about where we live. But this is also a business and investment on my part. And I bought in this neighborhood for the quality of life, the lifestyle, the home I bought, the lot a lot based off what you all planned for, and that was patio homes, twenty five foot restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
This this fence amongst the other concerns, this fence issues a huge elephant in the room. I don't know how we go further without resolving that. If the, that second amended DA truly tied back to the original landscape plan and some original six foot vinyl fencing, and if that truly was what the commitment was and the contract requires, the applicant would be the first one to say, we missed it and let's fix it. And if it's not the case, the homeowners would say, okay, as to that point, you know, complicated, nuanced, and let's just clarify it. So is that something that can be done in the next five, 10 minutes? Can you find that approval and either party or all the parties can acknowledge what the actual commitment was? Take, take a quick break and find out?
Well, I I don't know, um, Mr. President, members of council, council board, I I don't know that I can resolve this in 10 minutes. I mean, the reality is, I don't, this is not part of your application. Your application is to allow us a bonus room. There's nothing about fencing. If there's a complaint about fencing, it would normally go to planning. Planners would refer code enforcement out there to review it. They would go do the research to determine if it ever been decided, they'd contact the builder and we'd work through that process. I I I'm really hesitant on mixing that into this conversation. If you have an appeal of this denial and it's based on an issue that wasn't actually before you, then I think that's problematic. So I really, I understand the fencing issue. I understand what Mr. Bailey said. I don't know what the answer is, but it isn't in front of you. If that's an issue, we can address that issue. We address issues with with DA modifications or DA non compliance often, and we do enforce them as contracts. So we can address it. If that's really an issue, we can address it, but it isn't part of this.
And Mr. President.
Councilman.
To that point, what you're saying is we're on alert that this is a concern regardless of what happens to this application. That issue is getting looked into.
Yes.
All right.
And to Mr. Morton, to your comment about, do we have time? I I would like to give staff at least an opportunity to see. They may not be able to, if we take a 10 minute break and just, just take a look at the record and see if we have a few things we may not, but uh, we do need to take a break here anyway. We've been here since four thirty for us, so.
Mr. President.
And then we'll come back and take further testimony, Councilman.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, it's not, it it'd be interesting to know, this is a very touchy request to modify the DA and there are concerns with sound, et cetera, and kind of coexistence of these two communities next to each other and and the fencing may or whatever it's supposed to be might play a role in gaining comfort with what the request is. And so while it is not dispositive of what decision we make, I think it would just be interesting to know as we weigh the considerations of this specific application. So.
President Hugland, I'm I'm really not comfortable trying to research this in 10 minutes and giving it.
Well.
Giving an answer.
You're right, you're right, Sonya, you're off the hook. We're going to take a 10 minute break, any bio break, so we'll we'll be back in 10 minutes.
Another minute, Councilman Perro. Get started again. All right, I call this meeting back to order and we have a couple of folks who indicated they would like to testify as well. The public hearing is open, so someone gets to come on up. And like everyone else, state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I apologize for how I'm dressed. I wasn't really planning on talking, but Matt Anderson, 6281 South Bosch, Meridian 83642. So I just wanted to highlight and clarify a few things that were brought up that I think we're gonna... The fence, although important, the fence issue could easily get us detracted from. Adding a second story, whether it's occupied or not, changes things. And so if the roof line stays the same and now we occupy what used to be a attic with a space, it's changing the occupancy of the building, which could change the people, the noise, what we see. From my lot, looking up at something that starts at 13 feet above my lot in the backyard and extends 25 feet above that, my entire backyard lightscape is gone. All I see is that, is that building. And so to have a roof line that stays the same and then it be occupied or not is a mute point to me. It's adding space that would be potentially loud, that would be potentially added with people in it. And then from a fire department standpoint, I'm a professional firefighter. When you add something into a space, it changes the occupancy. And what happens in there, happens in there. So it's outside of the realm of what we know, but it's not an attic anymore. That's the point that, that I think the fence could overlook. And yes, if we add a fence in there, that would, that would detract from some of that ugliness. But as we added and graded those lots, that six foot five high fence is no longer six foot high on that side. I know that if I jumped over that fence behind me, it's about five foot because of the extra dirt. Whether they're gonna remove some of that dirt or not, but this five foot now fence of wrought iron is completely visible and clear to this giant wall behind me. So I urge you to, to do what's right for the people that are currently occupying the buildings and not side on a developer that is hoping to get more people in. They should be single-story homes, period. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir, come on up. I think the other two want to testify, so play some rock, paper, scissors, decide who's next and...
Sorry. Mike Montag, 6294, South Bosch Way, also in the same neighborhood here in Meridian. I just want to step back, like, the fence for now, forget it. We're, they're here tonight asking for a change. They're going through the process to get a change that's required by the city. I moved in two years ago. I bought a spec home. I went to them and asked for a change. It wasn't taken very nicely. I went in and I said, I'd like to just plant some more plants. I'd like to move a few things. Just landscaping, kind of similar to what we're really talking about with the fence. And I was held to a different standard than the builder who built my home. I wasn't permitted changes to make. I asked to move some things and I was frankly treated horribly by them. And this is how they're doing business and now they're asking you guys for a change. And when I said that to them, I said, hey, listen, you're holding me to a different standard than you did my builder. I was told abruptly to go back to California. These are the people asking you for it.
Thank you, Mike. We have the winner coming up, but the loser gets to come up too, if he deserves.
Roger Greaves, 2445 Brace Drive. I just have one make a couple points. We kind of have beaten the fence issue pretty well, but I would say that the, the fence line between the development going into our west, which is Lavender Heights and this new phase of East Ridge is going in, there is a tan vinyl fence in that location. Whereas the rest of Lavender Heights is a brown, dark brown and black vinyl fence. So I don't know who put up the fence. I don't know who paid for it, but it certainly looks as though it is the fence that was required under the initial plan that came in. So take that for whatever rats worth. The second I would have to say is, you know, we keep talking about, you know, we want to put in a bonus room. It's just a bonus room. It's just a bonus room. And in our minds, you know, I, I've had a bonus room in my house before. It turns into a TV room or, or the kids, the kids play their video games up there. It's just, it's, that's all it is, is open space. But from what Chuck is saying, from the plans, you can't tell if it's going to be specifically a bonus room or if it could be converted to a bedroom. So now you've gone from a three-bedroom to bath house, 1,700 square feet, whatever, to a 2,300 square foot house with four bedrooms. If you have a fourth bedroom, you're gonna put somebody in there, right? So my question to the, I actually have this question to the council and maybe you can answer me. Would it be in, would it be possible for the developer to come back with another development agreement? And let's be honest, they've come back for multiple development agreement amendments. So that's their mode of business. Could they possibly come back and say, hey, we would like to go from 55-plus community to single-family homes? Is that a possibility or are they, or is that the one thing within their applicant where they would be held to, oh no, it's absolutely gonna stay 55-plus? Or could they go to single-family homes? Could they come in for that amendment? Does, does...
We'll let the applicant answer that.
Well, you're, you're the city council. You, I would think somebody here could say that, yes, that is a... Or maybe somebody from staff could say, yes, they could come in for that amendment or no, that is something that is not amendable.
DA is, they can always ask for, for whatever they desire within the DA, so...
So it's, it's within the realm of possibility that two months from now, three months from now, the developer comes in and says, I would like to change this from retirement community 55-plus to single-family homes. It's within the zoning. It's, it would, it would fit the, the city's master plan for that area. Is that correct? Because I mean, let's face it, that's, that's what this developer has done. It's like, oh, we're gonna put in a pool and a, and a clubhouse. Oh no, let's go with a dog park. I mean, obviously that's in their favor financially, correct? And it, it just seems like they've made these amendments and, and it's all business. I get that. Sorry, out of time. That every amendment is in their favor to put more money in their pocket. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Name, address and...
Brett Proctor, 643 South Bosch Way. Appreciate the time. I'll go really quick. The only special consideration I really ask everyone to focus on is that I think usually where there's amendments, like everybody's kind of on flat ground, but really the problem here is that we're, there's already this kind of like very large hill. Our entire neighborhood has these large setbacks and there's these very small setbacks above. So it really is like looking up at this huge wall. And that's just what I really want to try to focus on and I just learned this term masting, but really trying to understand that like, if there's no limit on that, I, if I was building, I would try to get as much as I could out of it and I would try to get as much of that as possible, especially since there's no effect from the top. But looking down from the bottom, one of those pictures from the presentation is my house and it is already very daunting, intimidating, whatever it is. And I'd really just, we're really trying to make sure that it doesn't happen for the entire neighborhood at this point. And if there's not a limit there that says, you know, there has to be one in three and if it's, you can do all of them, I'm guessing it's gonna be all of them. So that's just, again, I don't know how that works with the regulations and the masting and the designs and all that, but that's where I'm, my main concern is. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, and then we'll have Chuck come up as representative of the HOA, five minutes, and then Laren will be up for his 10 minutes if he needs it for...
Chuck Covelo, 6269 South Bosch Way. One thing I, I did want to bring up is as a part of the development agreement, it does state in there that a grading plan was supposed to have been submitted with the first phase. And it never was. I don't see it and I think that's an important part when we're talking about between, you know, our lots and the lots above us. So you could get an understanding about the vertical component that we're talking about here. It's, it states in there that a grading plan was supposed to be submitted and I did not see it in there. I'm not saying it wasn't. I don't know. But it never was. I mean, I saw conceptual. I saw landscape. I saw, you know, the, the lot layouts. I saw everything in there but the grading plan that was supposed to have been required and that was never submitted. And I just wanted to go on record by saying that. It's obvious this is emotional and, you know, this is important to us and we understand, like we said, there is a need for this stuff. But it's also been said, it just keeps going on and on and on. These things were laid out, not with the intent to be two-story, period. The layout wasn't intended for that. There's gonna be more occupancy. Whenever you add more square footage, just like it was said, there's gonna be more occupancy. And it's just gonna be more noise in a backyard, 10-foot backyard right off of us, right, right above us, staring right down on the top of us. We don't know what else to do. Besides come here and ask you for this, to consider what we're saying, it does not meet the design considerations for R15. It doesn't meet it. There's noise, there's lighting, there's all those things we, we just went over. We just keep going over and over. You know, it, and even, even staff's report or the staff report talking about the monotonous walls not correct. Really what it should state is that, you know, maybe one house can have a roof line be that wide, but then maybe two more cannot and then one more can or something like that. But the way it's written right now, it's gonna allow it to happen. That has to be changed. That can't be approved like that. So, anyway, I, I didn't, wasn't really planning on speaking anymore tonight, but I think you got our, I think you got everybody's vibe. You got everybody's thoughts and ideas and concerns. We just ask you to really seriously think about this and we'll be available for any questions or future meetings or whatever.
Mr. President.
Oh, yes. Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. You had mentioned in your first testimony in regard to staff's proposal for the windows, the second story windows to only face forward, that there still will be lots where they will face into the lots, the surrounding lots. And so I'm gonna ask if Sonya can pull up the exhibit from the staff report. I'd like you to show us, I'm trying to understand where a forward-facing, a front-facing second-story window would look into the yard of the, of the lots that are in Phase 1 and then Lavender Heights, because I'm not seeing it from the plats.
While she's pulling that up, I also like to let everybody know, you know, our lots are 85, 90 feet wide. These lots are 45. So in every one of our backyards is two of these houses. I may, I may have a piece of paper that, I don't know if it could be put up on the screen too of...
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Sonya will be able to pull it up. This is, she's had to familiarize herself with this Heintyre project and we're grateful that she's willing to take this on, not having been able to, you know, read the mind of the prior planner, but still helping us answer these questions. So I trust that she'll be able to pull that up.
This really comes down to angles is what it comes down to. And it's just the way the language is written. It says facing and we'll see here in a minute. And then, so there's this that we're about to bring up. And then there's also the fact that the houses are gonna be faced over to the park and then directly across the street are homes too, and it's open. So not, this, this doesn't occur in a lot of spots. This is just a few areas.
Chuck, I wanted to ask you about that. So lot where the green shows, lot 20 to 22 through 20, that box and the arrow comes down. So there are two lots there that would face a house that would be the width of the house. The rest are back-to-back. So on each end of those, there's gonna have a house that's, you're looking at the width.
See where that goes? Go down a little with the hand. Who's bringing the hand down? That's not my plan. That's not, no, that's not even the correct layout. Yeah, I think, I think the red line just goes through the third house maybe. Not quite sure.
Where the, well, the screen that you checked, where the green arrow points to a lot. Right. That lot and the one above it is actually, is facing the one lot that is the width of that building. And you talked about math.
No, but take a look down below. Go further down.
Further down to the...
You see where the red arrow is? See the lots below the red arrow?
Right.
Okay, there's a private drive right there.
Okay.
Okay. And, and so basically what it is, if you're in the lower lots, you're looking up, you see the private drive and you see the houses. Okay, it's situations like that. It doesn't occur everywhere. Don't, don't, you know.
Okay.
There's just a few spots. It may even occur over on the Lavender Heights side. So we're like, okay, we're not facing, right? So this only occurs in a few areas. So why don't we just write the language where it says we can't see it? Simple. I don't, I don't see it as a big deal. Just, and that's what the builder told us too in the meeting. But for some reason it was written versus, it's facing. Well, if you own one of those lots, for instance, if you... Lot, what is, I think it's 17? Is that what? I can't tell. Or is that 20?
I don't see any numbers on lots.
Well, those lots that were just there.
Councilwoman Perro, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I, so I wanted to make sure I understood you correctly. This amen, I mean, we would be permitted to say, hey, this lot, this lot and this lot, you cannot have a second story. We can do that as part of this process. So I wanted to get clarification from you in terms of, you know, and, and I'm not stating this as in, in regard to any particular decision yet. This, I'm just getting information, which is that, is, is the real concern that you don't want a bonus room? Or is the concern that the bonus, that there may be individuals looking into your lots? I mean, I wanna take these individual, let me finish, sir, sorry. I wanna take these individual concerns and address them and make sure that, you know, is it a combination of the three of them that we need to, to base this decision? Is there room for there to be compromise? I'm just trying to, to understand that with the three concerns that were brought up, which is essentially line of sight issues, occupancy concerns or, or increased square footage, and then just concern over the developer not keeping their original intent. Those are the three things that have been presented. I want to make sure I'm understanding your concerns about all three of those things, which are the most important to you so that we can truly get to the bottom of the issues.
Other than the fencing, our number one concern is we just don't want these bonus rooms because of the occupancy.
More people.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and just to finish that, it's just a, you know, with this, there's a staff recommendation of things to be included as a part of this. And in that, I don't think the way Alan wrote it was really what him and I discussed was the fact. And, and it's also not what the builder said. I think with a simple modification to that would meet the intent of not being seen. But we don't, we just, we're, we're really against the whole idea of the bonus room.
Chuck, I have another question. There was testimony about, there is a portion that has a tan fence, a portion that has a black fence, and then you have the open vision fence.
Yes.
What, what section has, what type of fence? Where, where is that fence located? You're showing the picture of the open vision fence. Is that on the Lavender Heights side?
Oh, the, this, the pictures that I showed?
Yes.
Are between our homes, the estate lots and our 15... Are between our homes, the estate lots, and our 15 zoning, which is on the east side. If you notice, the builder talked about changes to the landscape plan. There was never any discussion about changes in the landscape plan for this. They were talking about the west side. There was never any discussion about the east side changes that I know of or that I read about. There's always discussion, and it's written right in there, that the landowner at that time, before, I guess he sold it, he wanted changes to the landscape plan for the wrought iron fencing. He wanted a bunch of things. Never got in originally. They came back and they added it afterwards. But I never saw any discussion or anything in any of this stuff about changing the fencing on our side. Again, I could be wrong. I could maybe miss something. So that's.
We can't talk there. Come up, let's find out where the fencing is, if you mind. Was it Roger or Mike? I can't remember. Okay, this is Roger.
The fencing that I described was on the Roger Grieve 62445 East Brace Drive, sorry. The fencing that I was talking about is on, it would be on the west side of East Ridge, the new phase that's being built, and then on the, and to be the, the east boundary of Lavender Heights, if that makes sense. So it's where you have the text in blue. It's those houses right there. And I wanted to add to the fact that that was open fencing for, before, and it was pulled out, I don't know by who, and replaced with the tan fencing.
Okay, thank you. All right, oh, you're good. You're good. All right. We got fencing location, different things like that. Lauren? You're going to solve it all in 10 minutes. No pressure.
Again, Lauren Bailey. Mr. President, counsel, I just kind of want to go back to what Mr. Neri said. You know, we're here to talk about the bonus rooms. Obviously, there are plans and the city has people in charge of making sure we do what we're supposed to do. And if something wasn't done, you know, we've been here, we will be here, we'll correct whatever that is. I just think we're getting way off topic on things that have nothing to do with what we're asking tonight. That doesn't mean they don't have merit. I'm not saying the neighbors might not have a concern. I get all that. But I'm just asking, can we refocus on, back on what we're here for tonight? If you have any questions for me, I'm glad to go through any of this history. I can talk to you about that fencing on the west side. But I'm just going to let it stand at that, that we're just here for the bonus rooms. And that's, that's what we've applied for.
Lauren, a quick question for the map we're looking at. Obviously, you have some homes constructed. How many homes are constructed from what we see here? Is it east side, north side, west side, everywhere?
So I don't know exact number. I apologize. I haven't driven out there lately. There are some homes under construction, but all the homes under construction are, do not have a bonus room.
Okay.
So we're trying to build the ones that we weren't going to do a bonus room on first because we were waiting for this process. So obviously, if, you know, if we're approved, then we can, we'll build those other lots. I don't, you know, the ones they're talking about on the corner with the common drive, I know the two on the south, at the, where the red arrow, near the red arrow, I know those two are the ones they showed you pictures of. Those are single, just single-story, no bonus room. The two on the north, I'm going to call it the northeast corner, I'm not sure what those are. If that was, you know, if we wanted to say those two have got to be single-story, I don't, I mean, that's fine. If that's what the concern is. So I'm okay with that, if that's the direction council wants to go.
Mr. President. Councilman Cavanagh.
And when you, if you were to be approved and add to these bonus rooms, what does that do to the square footage of the housing product?
Now, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think you're 400 to 500 square foot additional. It's not a huge change, but we're building the same product in Eagle, and surprisingly, a lot of people requested that bonus room. We initially thought 55 and over, maybe they wouldn't want that. But we have a lot of active 55-year-olds these days. I mean, my parents are 7'3" and they just built a two-story home with a master upstairs. I told them not to, but they did it anyway. So I think we've got a lot of active individuals who still can utilize that space.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Lauren, just refresh my memory, that average square footage of the product that you're putting in here?
Again, I don't have that in front of me. I think the average is between 1,800 and 2,000 square feet.
Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro.
When the amendment was requested to change the plat design, the number of lots stayed the same. Did the lot widths change with that?
Well, I mean, that's a tricky question because the lots we had before were square and not rectangular. And so the answer is yes, but the square footage size of the lot didn't change. Does that make sense? Because they were in four packs. If, I don't know if you remember, they're in four packs. So each lot was basically square in a four-pack instead of rectangular, more traditional layout that you see now.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro, and we weren't on council at that time, so that's why we don't remember.
Yeah, I was on planning and zoning then, I think. So, okay, so you have approximate 40, average 45-foot lot with a currently an 1,800 to 2,000 square foot home. So it's long and narrow, correct? And so obviously, you know, in this world, when you have a narrow lot, and then you have a long and narrow home, and you have multiple side-by-side, there does get to be a pattern that is, is a wall-like appearance, two-story or not two-story, but very much so, you know. So even if the window isn't facing down into the property, you have a taller wall with siding that hasn't, that doesn't break up, and, you know, there's no window to even break up the siding or the look of that. What, can you share your thoughts with us about this massing concept? And you're legitimate. I mean, give us a legitimate thought on what this is, how this is going to affect these neighbors. Because I agree with the statement that was made by one of the members of the public that said, we want the developer to care as much about us because we just bought homes from them in the last two years, as they do about these new homeowners that are going to have these homes that want their additional 500 square feet. So it's a fair statement from a member of the public that seeing all of this happen from the outside, it doesn't step in your shoes and have these conversations with the people in Eagle about their desire. And, you know, I always feel like it helps me understand the, when I know the intent of why this ask is happening. So it sounds to me like you've been requested by, in other parts of the community for this new type of floor plan, and that's why you're attempting to put it here. Can you give us more understanding of what brought about this, you know, requested amendment?
Yeah, I mean, I think you just summed it up. I mean, that's where it came from. We initially, and like I said, the original plan, the original house plans we showed, the one does show window over the garage. We intended to put a bonus room on some of the units. We didn't realize how big the demand was. So, yes, we're trying to, you know, that's why when we got to building permit, we didn't realize this was even going to be an issue until we got to the building department. Meridian's code is written differently, which was our mistake. But the intent, I mean, when we came in with the DA mod and put those new elevations in front of the council, was that some of them would have a bonus room. That was never, you know, a question. But, you know, that's why we're here today. We're here to ask, because code isn't clear on it, we're here to ask if we can, if we can do that. As far as, you were asking about the massing, you know, yes, you've got a wall, but then you've got a roof line going away from you. It's not just 25 feet straight up. Some of them have different backs, you know, facing, but most of them have a roof slipping away from you. And so, you know, we do have a mix of products, a mix of homes, but yes, you know, we meet the R15 ordinance for setbacks. We didn't ask for anything extra here. We're meeting all the setbacks and requirements of the R15 zone.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Lauren. And Sonya, that was a question I had, was the 10-foot setback is, if my memory is right, is 10-foot is allowed for R15 in the backyard?
So that, you're asking about the rear setback?
Yes, rear setback.
It's 12 feet per code. I don't know if this was approved under a PUD.
Hey, Lauren, can you, can we find out, was this under a PUD, planned unit development?
It was approved in 2017, before my time with the company. I don't remember. I don't recall if it was a PUD or not. I don't, I know we meet the R15 zone, whether those are 10 or 12 feet, I don't have in front of me. But I, and I, yeah, so I apologize if I'm wrong on the 10 verse 12, but I know that we're meeting the zone.
It's not up here that it was a PUD. So the minimum rear setback is 12 feet is the requirement.
I believe we're meeting that.
Okay.
Or we wouldn't be getting a building permit.
All right. Now we've come to our end of the public hearing. We've had the closing comments by the HOA and the applicant. And counsel, would you like to discuss before we close the public hearing, or would you like to close the public hearing? Councilman Cavanagh. We've had the closing comments by the HOA and the applicant. So we've reached that portion where we'll be talking now.
Thanks, Mr. President. And one, first, want to thank you, Mr. President, just for those of you that are, first time to see council. Normally, our mayor is here to conduct the meeting. Council president is filling in tonight. And one of the things we typically don't do is allow people to come up multiple times to speak. And I just, I think because the council is really wanting to get some perspective from you, the neighbors, you've kind of granted that. So I want to thank you, Mr. President, for doing that. And then, I also think Chuck and the neighbors, for those of you who are either new to our community who've been here for a long time, I think council really appreciates when we conduct our business neighborly. It's very apparent there's some frustrations, maybe even some anger from some of you, but I want to commend you for really keeping the discourse neighborly. We don't always see that. So Chuck, I think you led the way with that, and I just, I want to commend you on that. There's been a lot that was thrown at us tonight, and the whole fence thing was really something that I wanted to sink my teeth into. You know, I think as council, we try and see things from the perspective of the residents while also remaining impartial. And I was really wrestling with how we're going to take on that fence piece because it's not part of the application or the development agreement request that's for us tonight. I was part of these conversations in 2017 and in 2019, and I clearly remember neighbors coming and voicing some very legitimate concerns that they did not want people in a second floor looking into your backyard. And I think that was where the council said we don't want people peering in the backyard. I understand, I've got neighbors who appear into my backyard. I can kind of peer into my neighbor's backyard. I know, well, I have good relationships with my neighbors. It's just awkward at times. And so I think the council was correct in saying we didn't want windows peering in. So when this came before us, I was initially a little frustrated, like, whoa, I remember the conversation with council. Steph, Alan, Sonya, who is, are filling in for Alan, I think the recommendations were appropriate, that we didn't want windows peering into people's backyards. And so for me, then it's the question of, does the addition of a bonus room contribute to a lower quality of lifestyle for the impacting neighbors? And I'm struggling to see that threshold for me. While I appreciate the feedback and the comments of the neighbors, I am supportive of the request from the applicant. I think that this, because there's going to be more square footage, that somehow we're going to have this overabundance of people that will make more noise. Well, I can appreciate where you're coming from. I'm just not seeing the nexus with that. So I'm one that I'm supportive of the request that's before us tonight, recognizing the conversation about the fence is going to play out separately from staff, separately from us with staff. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strater.
Yeah, just to give a different viewpoint. So, yeah, I agree. The fence issue is tabled as well as the setbacks. I think you heard pretty clearly that if you feel that the previous agreement was not followed, you have a process to follow up with the city. So that's a separate discussion, but you have been given advice about that, and you could ask staff about that. I am not supportive of this change at all. Maybe I'm a little bit of a DA originalist, just to like throw a little, throw a little firebomb out there. But no, I mean, like, if you read it, it says single-story. Like, it says single-story. I take that very clearly to mean in plain language, it means one story. Our code is super clear. Bonus rooms are not included in a single-story. It's not allowed. They can read the code. They know the code. The developer can follow it. It's supposed to be a single-story. This was a very contentious application back when it happened. It was done under the condition that it be single-story. All the neighbors who bought their homes did so, reading it and believing it was single-story. I also really was moved by the picture that showed, this change is going to change the roof lines. They're not the same. Like, you're going to get block after block after block, and it's going to be like a big wall. And I think following the original renderings would at least give a lot more variety to the roof line. So, yeah, I won't be voting in favor.
Councilwoman Bur.
You know, I've never heard that term used on city council before as a DA originalist. I really like that. But I, without getting too far into my statement, I agree with Councilwoman Strater. So I don't need, for all the same reasons that she just spoke up.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro.
I was on planning and zoning when this came through and remember the testimony fairly well. But our, you know, we have to make our decisions based on what is presented in this hearing. What I remember from that, from those hearings, from those meetings, was that the applicant was, the biggest challenge of the entire project when it was originally presented in whole as a concept was, was the 55-plus area. That there was a lot of concern about that. Was it going to be, how was the parking going to be? Was it going to be fenced? Was it not? There's no other 55-plus communities in this whole southern part, you know, so why should we bring that out? Will people even buy something there because it's so far away from any amenities or so far away from town? I mean, the whole entire original conversation regarding this was about that 55-plus area. That was the big unknown. And a lot has changed in our community in five years in terms of access to amenities and access to, and road widenings, because now the road, the road's going to be widened in front of there. But I, one thing I do know about 55-plus communities, especially in my industry, is that they are intended to stay on a smaller scale. And so I agree with Councilwoman Strater in that, I think that this, this does not fulfill the intent of the 55-plus community, whether it's 1,400 square feet or 1,800 square feet. You know, the technical square footage of it is not, is not the issue. It's that the intent is that we have smaller lots with smaller homes. There's a lot of different definitions of what a patio home is. Essentially, the idea and the thinking is, is that it is a smaller home. And if you take an 1,800-square foot house and you put a 400-square-foot bonus room on it, we're not a 55-plus community with smaller homes anymore. And so in my opinion, whether you want to say it's single-story or not single-story, the intent is that it remain a home that's smaller on a smaller lot. And the applicant promised that that would have that feel when it came to be in this area. There was a lot of conversation about that at the time. And so in my opinion, in staying in line with what was, you know, what was indicated to be that style of community that I, I agree that, that the D should not be modified.
Want to comment? I wanna comment that, uh, um, my, my parents live in a patio home, and it was built in the mid-two thousands. And, uh, they went with the single family or single floor plan. Uh, but it is a fifty-five plus community where they have sprinkled throughout, uh, a two-story with a bonus room. Because active lifestyle, of course, they're much older now than when they were when they moved in. But it is primarily older folks who have grandkids who are visiting, families visiting, they use it for a hobby room and those types of things. Uh, and my parents downsized, and it's, it's about an eighteen hundred square foot patio home, so. And, and as I thought about it, as I'm listening to this tonight, and I'm thinking about where they live and looking at the homes, the second floor on the homes that are, it's not every other one, they're kinda more scattered about, are front-facing, and some have a side window that looks down more towards their, out towards the front and facing the front yards of, of the other patio home. So it's, it's, it's doable from that product, and, and they don't seem overly large. You don't look like a two-story home like we live in, that's much, much bigger because of, of the width. And, and I kinda look, as, as going back and forth, you know, of, of, okay, what's, what's two-story? And to me, if you keep it under that twenty-five foot, to me, it's less, okay. Whether you're two-story, one-story, if you're limited at twenty-five foot, you're not gonna be thirty-eight or whatever our house is. And, and that to me is a, a, a big difference. So I, I'm comfortable if they're able to do some things that keep the windows towards the front or side and not going out the back and keep it at twenty-five foot. Then this, this is admittedly an unusual property because of that hill and that height. And I really thought we could get there with the, some vinyl fencing and at least require that fencing. And that is, 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 as council's pointed out, a completely separate issue that may be addressed in, in the future. And, uh, you know, I, I know there's a landscaping plan for, for these homes and, and, uh, it'd be good if the developer can, can make that, that happen. But it, it, it's tough to say no to a, a product that remains the same height. And they're making changes internally and willing to accommodate, making sure that people aren't being looked down upon, especially at that height. But I would, I just wish we could do something about the fencing, and that's, that's a little frustrating because I, I think that would go a long ways. Whether, because even if we don't do this, that open vision fencing, it's, it's gonna be the same, twenty-five feet with that, with that view. So that's, that's the problem that I have, but I can't fix that.
Mr. President. Councilman Burton.
I don't have a lot more to add, other than this is an example, over the years, that you think back to the, the prior approval of a DA and, and the mindset of modifying them with, with hesitation and reservation. And, and would this project originally have been approved or the prior DA been approved? If presented with what came forward tonight, I'm not so certain that's the case. So, um, if it wouldn't have passed muster before, I'm not sure there's circumstances that warrant changing that now. Sometimes DA modifications make sense, sometimes a deal's a deal and you live with it. This is one where I think the latter frankly applies. Lauren, you do great work, but I just don't think it's cleared the bar to modify the DA as presented.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pro.
I have one more thing to say about all of this in general. You know, when we have DA modifications that come before us, and they're, and the applicant's asking for a change because there's a geographic element of the property that they weren't aware of, or there's an easement that needs to be negotiated with a neighbor or something, I get that. But when you have a development agreement and a concept plan, and you do multiple DA modifications, substantially change the development for what it was originally intended to be, I have an issue with applicants using this process to make a, a, a project what it was not originally presented as. And so if this had been the only ask from, from this, you know, I, that would maybe weigh in my mind differently. But this is the third request to make a fairly significant change to this project, such that I don't think it's gonna look like what it was originally proposed. And so I just wanna put that out there because it is, uh, it's not the first time I've seen that happen. But that is for me, an element of this decision, is how many times there's been modifications made and, and the significance of those modifications. And every single one of the modifications that have been requested have, have not necessarily been modifications that had to do with an element that the developer couldn't help because of something that was out of their control. And I'm not saying that's the only reason the DA amendment should exist, but I do think that it is, I, I don't see this as a tool that should be used to change what was originally presented substantially.
Thank, thank you, councilman. Robust discussion as always.
Mr. President.
Yes, councilwoman Strater.
I move that we close the public hearing.
We have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed.
After considering all staff.
Councilwoman Strater, go ahead.
I apologize, Mr. President, thank you for being patient with me and mean to interrupt you. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to deny file number H twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three-seven as presented in today's hearing date for the following reasons. Um, the, uh, DA request results in an inappropriate transition with the surrounding neighbors and is not in line with the original proposal, and therefore is not in the best interest of the city at this time.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? On East Ridge subdivision twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-three-seven, we will have a roll call. Whoa, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President, Strater.
Aye.
Byrne. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton. Oakland.
No. Or knows? The motion to deny is carried, and we are done with item number four. We took action on item number five resolutions, uh, already, under the public hearing for CDBG funding. Uh, we are now at item number six ordinance. City clerk, could you please read this ordinance by title only?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, section nine-one-sixteen, concerning connection to city water system outside city limits. Amending Meridian Code, Meridian City Code, section nine-four-twenty-six, concerning connection to city sewer system outside city limits, voiding conflicting ordinances and resolutions and providing an effective date.
Mr. Nary, on, on this ordinance, uh, do, are we able to suspend the rules if we desire on this? This wasn't controversial, that's something we're moving forward on, on this?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, we have included that language about suspension of rules in the caption and in that ordinance itself. Normally, we've done those in land use applications where you had a hearing some other time. Otherwise, state code allows you to pass an ordinance on one hearing, two hearings, three hearings. It, it doesn't matter, so you have the, always have the ability to suspend the rules. We've been trying to excise that language out of everything else, just to make sure people understand. Again, that's, we follow what the code allows, the code allows you to do that. We've only put it in historically on the other type because the hearing was held at a different time. That, that's really the only reason.
I'll let the maker of the motion decide what they wanna do.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve ordinance number two-two-dash-one-nine-eight-nine with the suspension of rules.
Second.
Motion second to, uh, adopt ordinance twenty-two-dash-one-nine-eight-nine with suspension of rules. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President, Strater.
Aye.
Byrne. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye. All eyes, motion carries. Do we have any future meeting topics? Okay. We are at final item adjournment.
President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Great job tonight, appreciate your leadership. I have a move, we adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.